And before we proceed, we're gonna go ahead and have our indigenous land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land currently occupied by Washington Unified School District as the traditional home of the Potwin people. The sovereign people have been caretakers of the area since time immemorial. And despite centuries of genocide and occupation, Potwin people continue as vibrant and resilient federally recognized and unrecognized tribes, bands, and rancherias. Today, we honor and recognize our Potwin tribal neighbors for their contribution as the caretakers of the Sacramento Valley and honor their sustained existence. With their blessing and continued guidance, Washington Unified School District seeks to provide an accessible, equitable, and supportive institution of learning and experience. All right, and now for our pledge of allegiance. And if we could please have Eleanor Sanchez lead us in.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, one nation, indivisible.
Thank you. All right, and now we're gonna go ahead and have our roll call. Vice President Pizzotti.
Here.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Present.
Trustee Wong.
Here.
Trustee Venegas.
Present.
And once, and once again, trustee Wong and trustee Venegas are participating via teleconference pursuant to government code 54953. And their addresses were posted on, on the published agendas, and I too am present. All right, announcements of action taken in closed session. Regarding government code section 54957.6, conference with labor negotiators, WSTA, CSEA, and management, information was received. And government code section 54957, public employee discipline dismissal and release, information received. All right, and now approval of the agenda. Do I have, there any changes or yes?
I have one change. I would like to remove action item P6, the approval of the agreement between Washington Unified School District and Miracle University dropout prevention program for us to get some more information.
We're asking it to be removed?
Yes.
All right. Anything else? Do you guys have anything, Al?
Nope, no, I'm good.
Okay, just making sure. I'm checking on you guys often. All right, so Vice President Pizzotti moves.
I second.
And Clerk Kirby Gonzalez seconds. And since we have virtual, we have to do a roll call vote. And with that being said. Bless you. Trustee Venegas.
Aye.
Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right, approval of the agenda. And now on for communications and celebrations. Do we have any? No, I don't know why I said it then. Association reports, CSEA report, and Ruth? Okay, just making sure, I wasn't sure. Come on up.
Good evening, President Coffey, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, and Cabinet. Every beginning of school year, I'd like to take a moment and center our own personal driving forces that will help lead us towards progress, unity, success, and for the betterment of the district. And of course, the betterment of our students. Last year, you may remember my focus was to have a more productive relationship with the district to improve upon any issues or concerns that arise without letting things linger or become stale, which leads to lower morale, less productivity, and decreased collaboration. This is my exact statement from last year, quote, "I am hoping that I am joined in similar driving forces and calls to action, and that we all commit to not letting things simmer, or believe that in time problems will resolve themselves. That has never worked and will never work." End quote. We have to begin to work together and be transparent in what is going well, what is not working, and how we can improve things. This year, I want to build on last year's driving force and focus on both increasing collaboration and also supporting our employees in professional and courteous treatment and respect. On that note, I would like to offer the following information. Summer programs happened at most of our campuses this year. Those programs are a great resource for our students and families over the summer months. We would love to see our classified employees celebrated, such as custodians and food service employees who work during the summer, especially those who over the last year or two have seen huge increases in students and programs on their campuses. Our first professional learning day for certain classifications at the high school was well planned and successful. Thank you to Director Billingsley, Connie, and Sarah of Ed Services for your dedication to our classified members and their professional development. Not sure if it was due to budget concerns, lunch was not provided this year. That's okay with me. If it is for budget constraints, we would assume that for all other staff meetings like those for administrators, that the same budget considerations or constraints will exist for them. Transitioning now to what is not working great or what we can improve upon, change. Change in procedures, change in working conditions, change in attire, change in anything that could impact a classified employee in terms of something that could become or lead to disciplinary action must go through the negotiation process. We must meet and confer and ultimately agree. This is fundamental to our union protections, and again, we want and deserve to be treated fairly and with respect. So in order to decrease the amount of concerns and complaints from members regarding changes, it would be beneficial if the district reaches out to us in advance of such changes so that we can begin the negotiation process and avoid confusion and impacts to our morale. In terms of morale, I truly believe that leaders in this district, in any district for that matter, have an opportunity to mentor, to support, and engage their employees in positive ways. I'm here before you encouraging the leadership of Washington Unified School District to continue to promote the support of their employees. We can assume positive intentions when and only if we are treated with the same respect that others are given. Right now, this week, I'm fielding questions and concerns from classified members at various locations, sites throughout the district. They are reported to have been yelled at, they're feeling scared, intimidated by administrators, yes, yelled, and berated. Being worried about what's coming next in terms of their treatment, not knowing how to react or cope while their lunches were thrown away. Imagine having your lunch thrown away in front of you at your place of work. Being told that they need to wear new, quote, "safety vests" and just asking for clarification to their administrators in emails without being responded to in professional manners. This is an excerpt from a message that was shared with us yesterday. I've removed identifying information they requested to be anonymous. When I look, quote, "When I look for support, I get an aggressive interrogation. It always starts with a 'why? Why are you calling? Why did they call you for?' Shutting my conversation short. We feel that my supervisor is not approachable. We feel intimidated. I said 'us' because many of us feel this way, same way. I am hardworking, responsible, reliable, and excellent team player. Others have this opinion of me, and I believe I can offer much more if provided the right tools. However, under guidance, my aspirations have greatly diminished, slowly destroyed my self-esteem and morale, to the point where instead of looking for ways to promote, I'm looking for a way out." End of quote. A member, another member told me, "I'm looking for another job because I have no opportunities for growth or advancement here." All of these statements are from my members. They all happen to be female and Latinx. This brings my close. We need to look at the aspiring leadership diverse educator program in terms of benefits to classified employees. For transparency, I have asked for an audit of the program. I want to know who has benefited from this program? How much has the district invested in classified employees? And what in terms of success rates are there? Thank you to Assistant Superintendent Shay for being so responsible and responsive to this ask from us. We should be meeting soon on this. On that note, from the special board meeting, I do not believe it was recorded, so I'm just saying, I don't know exact word for words. We learned the district is forming subcommittees to address budget concerns and the forecasted shortfalls. Professional consultants, such as ScholarShare, I think Dr. Rio's, administrative consultants, other programs that we've invested thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars without any return. If there's no data of success being shared from these programs, they should be stopped, they should be cut before any classified positions, any positions in the district are considered. Classified employees are literally the driving force behind the operations of this entire district. It is in everyone's best interest that they are all treated, all of them, with dignity and the respect they deserve. I look forward to working with you all this year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and our WSTA report, President Depp.
Good evening, Superintendent Hildreth, President Coffey, Vice President Pizzotti, Clerk Kirby Gonzalez, trustees, cabinet. Good to see you tonight. I just want to start off by saying it's been a great start to the year. For the first time, I've been able to go around and actually see what's going on at every site. And it's, it's always exciting to see the kids excited and the teachers ready to go. When people ask me why teachers get summer break, I always say, "Look at them at the end of the year and then look at them at the beginning of the year, and you'll understand." And I hope to see you guys out and about at schools. I know you've got your, your regular day jobs, but it's always nice to see you there. I wanted to start out tonight talking a little bit about a controversial issue, and that is SROs. And I'm not gonna make a statement regarding a finalized position from WSTA, but there's some things that I think that need to be considered when we're considering school safety officers. And so the first thing I want to say is that WSTA recognizes that there's a need to improve safety and finding options to improve safety, especially after the last few years with some issues that we've had at our sites. We know there's been increasing incidents on campus. And one of the things we need to ask ourselves first is, are we doing a good job of following through with our current systems? And our current systems, are they identifying the needs of our students and our teachers? Are we creating behavior plans? And more importantly, are those behavior plans following students when they change school sites? You know, it's important, as a teacher, I can tell you, it's important to know what triggers a student and what calms a student down. And if we can give that information to a teacher at the beginning of the year or at the beginning of a relationship with a student, that can do a lot. I think there's a difference in perception regarding law enforcement depending on culture. And I think one of the things that WUSD has to do is consider our own biases and privileges when we consider law enforcement. Because for people who look like me, our experiences might be different than people who don't look like me. And we can't just assume the positive intent that we have in our hearts when the perception might be different on the other side. Some families in our district fear in law enforcement, and in fact, some families in our district actually have to spend time talking to their children about what to do if they're pulled over because there is a genuine fear of harm. And I'm not gonna talk about whether or not that's justified or not. I think it's important just to recognize that it exists. And there's some of us that have never had to consider that reality, but it's real. When kids are taught by families how to react, what message does it send to our families when we, those of us who don't have those experiences, decide to put folks on campuses that create that anxiety without consulting those families? What does that mean? What does that say about us? Because, again, we haven't experienced those things. But imagine a body making decision to put somebody on a campus that a certain percentage of your students actually are terrified of. Now, again, I'm not making a comment about law enforcement in general. I'm talking about the reality of our student experiences. WSTA can see the need to be restorative in regards to building relationships back with law enforcement. Law enforcement is an important part of our society. We need them. And they do work that is so critical and so challenging and dangerous. However, this process needs to take into consideration the fear in our community and perceptions regarding power dynamic. We question the message it sends to students having someone armed on campus. Do they need to carry a weapon? It seems they can build by back trust by eliminating uniforms and weapons, but being there, being present. You can't start a relationship with divergent power dynamics. If you put someone on campus with a weapon that people fear for genuine reasons that their family has experienced, then there's not gonna be the grounding trust at the beginning of that relationship because the power dynamics are too different. So what does that mean? What can it look like? WSTA is not opposed to the idea of looking at an SRO, but it's gotta look different. It's gotta represent our entire community, just not, not just the people who look like me and have had experiences like me. It's gotta represent everybody. Look at our demographics in our population. Our students don't look like me. They haven't had the same experiences as me. And we need to acknowledge that. We need to have a robust conversation and talk about a different paradigm for building back this relationship. We have to ask questions like, would this change make a difference for all, difference for all students? What impacts, both positive and negative, would this change have? Are there more effective ways to improve safety in our community? I think this conversation is important. But we need to honor all of our families and do it right and not base our assumptions on our own experiences. Moving on, I'd like to talk a little bit about the River City Performing Arts Center with, as long as you, as well as you, I am very excited about that. I'm an arts person. Our community is excited, but for nearly 20 years, we've talked about this facility, and we haven't gotten it. And at the last board meeting, we saw a beautiful presentation. I'm gonna be a little bit dramatic here, but I'm gonna call it propaganda. Because we're trying to sell a message to our community, but I think our community deserves to know what the status of the Performing Arts Center is. Do we have the money? If not, where is it gonna come from? How much are we gonna have to cut from the Performing Arts Center from what we originally visualized? I don't want to see another presentation up in front of us that glamorizes an idea without the meat behind it to understand if that idea is even possible and what version of that idea is gonna come to fruition. So I'm asking the board to ask for a public update on the Performing Arts Center and where we stand. Finally, the beginning of the year is continuing to expose what has been exposed every year since the program started, and that's discrepancies between sites in our VAPA program, our visual and performing arts program. There are discrepancies in transitions, schedules, and expectations. It is clear that continuing the VAPA task force remains essential until we smooth out the bugs, and in fact, until we have language for our VAPA teachers, because we don't have a job description. There's really no language in the contract for what their day looks like. And if we are going to honor teachers who have a professional skill, we can't tell those teachers, "Well, guess what? You don't have a class here, so we're gonna send you to kindergarten, or we're gonna have you make copies, or we're gonna have you go and monitor student activity on the playground." That's not a message we send to science teachers. It's not a message that we send to literature teachers or English teachers. So when we send that message to our VAPA teachers, even though everybody loves to say they value the arts, we're saying the opposite. And we need to ask those questions. So please direct the cabinet to continue the task force. We need to keep arts in our schools, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and at this time, we will go into our public comments, but before then, I will read our public comment disclaimer. At our regular board meeting held on February 9th, 2023, the board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board, but not read into the record during the meeting. Members of the public may address the board on the topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know, the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to its, to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the rights of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy, and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own, you may be deemed out of court. And furthermore, it is important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. And so at this time, we will open for public comments, and I believe we have seven. All right.
Yes, we have seven public comments, general public comments. Our first speaker is Nikiba Gregory.
Hello. You'll be happy to know I'm not gonna go into the weeds today, so I'm just gonna stay very brief on everything. I do, for an Indian ed update, I have sent out emails. I'm waiting for replies. I am definitely waiting for a copy of the grant to be sent to us so that we can review it. This is a public document. We're allowed to look at it. And so I'm just, I'm just gonna leave that there, but I do want to bring up a couple of other things. One is that there was a lot of emails during the summertime, especially like the month before school start. before school started. I want you to know that I do not get paid during the summertime, and I do not check my email during the summertime. So when I went back to look how far the emails went, it was a little shocking to see how far I was expected to look back and see items that I'm supposed to be aware of. So I think that those shouldn't start until school actually starts. The other thing is, is that we had a wonderful lunch brought to us by our parent-teacher club, and it was wonderful. I got to have a nice conversation. But one of the things that we talked about is that we really need to have Spanish subtitles on our presentations, on everything. They should be there. Another one is that I think that we need to focus more on students and relationships. This will make our dashboard not look so fancy for a while. It won't look so good, but if we just focus on what students really need, instead of trying to push them to learn faster, get more, I think that we'll catch up in the long run. You know, one of the things that I know is that, you know, students respond to relationship building with teachers, and just, you know, I'm just getting-to-know-you type of things that I'm doing with my classes right now. And I ask kids, and I'm talking about from first grade all the way through eighth grade, to write their first and last name, and I cannot tell you how many fifth through eighth graders don't know how to spell their last name. That's shocking. And how many kids in first through fifth don't know what their last name is? So I have given everybody the homework assignment of, "Go home, find out what your last name is, and learn how to spell it," because that's really important information. That is a basic skill. If we really want to know what kids need, we need to ask a teacher, because the teacher knows what kids need and how to make it more engaging and fun. We need to focus on nutrition. Although the kids like our lunches and breakfast, they're not really nutritious. And I invite you to come over and have breakfast and lunch any day at one of our campuses, and you will see that they may be cheap and we have, you know, good prices and everything, but there is nothing like a home-cooked meal. And I think that we could just kind of eliminate pork, because there are so many different kids that don't use pork, and we could focus and make it so that it really is nutritional and kids want to eat it and not lag after lunchtime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Maria Garcia.
Hola, buenas tardes. Gracias por la oportunidad de hablar, y esta es a quien corresponda. El día viernes 16 de agosto del 2024, a las 12:10, yo, María García, entré a la oficina a pedirle a la secretaria que, por favor, me sacara una copia de un documento con información confidencial que la señora Lucía me pidió que le ayudara a obtener. La señora Lucía no habla inglés, por esa razón me pidió ayuda. Entré a la oficina y le pedí a la secretaria si, por favor, me sacaba una copia del documento. La secretaria tomó el documento y caminó a sacar la copia. Yo la observaba con atención. Al llegar la secretaria a la máquina de imprimir, también llegó la enfermera. Casi inmediatamente se acercó a la secretaria y empezaron a decir que la máquina no imprimía. La secretaria abrió la máquina y sacó la tinta. La enfermera caminó hacia dentro de un pequeño cuarto que estaba al lado derecho de la oficina de la secretaria, y la secretaria entró después detrás de la enfermera. Duraron unos minutos y regresaron. La secretaria puso la tinta en la máquina, miré que imprimió una copia, y la enfermera dijo, "No, no, no imprime la máquina," y comenzó a doblar el documento con la información confidencial. En ese momento le pedí el documento, y la respuesta de la enfermera fue, "No, es un documento confidencial." Sentí temor de que rompiera o desapareciera el documento confidencial que la señora Lucía, con toda confianza, me pidió, "Por favor, ayudara a que la imprimera una copia." Me acerqué a la enfermera pidiéndole, "Por favor, me entregar el documento," y no me lo entregó. Le dije que la señora Lucía estaba en el cuarto donde comen los maestros, que estábamos ahí en el cuarto donde comen los maestros el viernes 16 de agosto 2024 desde las 10:00 de la mañana, con el PTC dando la bienvenida a los maestros. Entre ellos estaba la señora Nakiba. Les estábamos dando un lonche a los maestros de parte de los padres y maestros club, y aún así la enfermera no me entregó el documento. La enfermera insistía que era un documento confidencial, y efectivamente era un documento confidencial. La enfermera me decía que no me lo podía entregar, y yo le dije que solo le pedí a la secretaria una copia que yo traje, y que yo traje el documento porque la señora Lucía me dio permiso, y aún así no me lo entregó. Le llamé a mi hija a las 12:15, que estaba junto con la señora Lucía, Angela, Daniela, y el señor Emilio, miembros del PTC. Le pedí a mi hija que, por favor, le dijera a la señora Lucía que viniera a la oficina lo más rápido posible. La señora Lucía llegó muy rápido. Le comenté que la enfermera no me quería entregar el documento confidencial, y la enfermera le habló en inglés a la señora Lucía, que no entiende inglés. La enfermera salió muy rápido hacia afuera de la oficina sin pedirnos que la acompañáramos, y caminó hacia el cuarto donde estaban los maestros, comiendo el lonche de PTC que les organizamos como bienvenida al año escolar. La enfermera caminó muy rápido, y la señora Lucía y yo tratabamos de alcanzarla. Entramos al cuarto, y la enfermera imprimió el documento, y por fin se lo entregó a la señora Lucía. Había mucho coraje en el ambiente. La enfermera empezó a destapar la comida, mirando qué había dentro, y después se fue a donde teníamos la bebida y tomó una soda de Square. La enfermera molesta.
Thank you, Maria.
La abrió, y hablando algo, se salió del cuarto. Todavía más, se lo mandé por correo electrónico.
Y por eso tenemos...
El tiempo contado.
Sí.
Puedo añadir algo pequeño? Nada más, muchas gracias.
I will translate for her.
Muchas gracias, Virginia Caffey.
I would like to translate. I'm translating.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Maria.
One second. I'm just making sure. This is To Whom It May Concern. On Friday, August 16th, 2024, I entered the office of Riverbank Elementary School to ask the secretary to please make a copy of a document with confidential information that Ms. Lucia had asked me to help her obtain. Ms. Lucia does not speak English, which is why she asked for my assistance. I entered the office and asked the secretary if she could please make a copy of the document. The secretary took the document and walked to make the copy, and I was observing her closely. When the secretary reached for the printer, the nurse, who is a health aide, arrived almost immediately. The nurse approached the secretary, and they began to say that the machine wasn't printing. The secretary opened the machine and removed the ink. The nurse walked into a small room to the right of the office, and the secretary followed behind her. They spent a few minutes there and then returned. The secretary put ink back in the machine. I saw that she printed a copy, and the nurse then said, "No, no, the machine isn't printing," and began to fold the document that had confidential information. At that moment, I asked for the document back, and the nurse's response was, "No, it's confidential document." I felt afraid that she might tear or lose the confidential document that Ms. Lucia had entrusted to me to help her get a copy of. I approached, asking her to please hand me the document, but she did not give it to me. I told her that I had been in the teachers lounge since 10:00 in the morning with the PTC welcoming the teachers, in which Nakiba was also present, and offering a lunch provided by the parent and teachers club. Still, the nurse did not give me the document. The nurse insisted that it was confidential document, and indeed, it was confidential, and she told me that she could not hand it to me. I told her that I had only asked for a copy and that I had brought the document because Ms. Lucia had given me permission, but still, she did not hand it over. I called my daughter at 12:15, who was with Ms. Lucia, and asked my daughter to please tell Ms. Lucia to come to the office as quickly as possible. Ms. Lucia arrived very quickly. I mentioned that the nurse did not hand over the confidential document. The nurse spoke to Ms. Lucia in English, which Ms. Lucia does not understand, and then the nurse quickly left the office without asking us to follow her and walked towards the room where the teachers were eating the lunch that the PTC had organized as a welcome to the school year. The nurse walked very quickly, and Ms. Lucia and I tried to catch up with her. We entered the room, and the nurse went to print the document, and finally she handed over the document, and that's when the buzzer went off.
Thank you. All right. Next. I'm up. Okay, Mario. Our third public comment request is from Pat Flynn.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here this evening, number one, to discuss the budget. Special meeting, once again, not recorded for public review. We only had 24 hours' notice of this special meeting, and there was another meeting here in West Sacramento that was going on that some of us had committed to attend, so we could not attend the budget meeting. You have a shortfall of cuts that you've known about since January, and you waited this long to discuss it at a special meeting when it could have been discussed at a regular board meeting. COVID dollars should not even have been mentioned or considered because it's one-time money that should have been spent on students' transition back to the classrooms after a year and a half of being away. You shouldn't have used that money for anything that was going to be extended past the COVID money time. No public access of the discussion. Where is it? No summary of the discussion, no outcomes from the discussion, no board direction. We have no information available to the public regarding any of this information. This shit has got to stop, and I'm sorry I used a cuss word. Then you're planning a facilities special meeting. At least you're giving us some notice on September the 5th, if I read correctly, about facilities, which are another part of this community's welfare. You cannot continue to have meetings that are not publicly recorded, nor given us enough notice to gather our own information to ask intelligent questions. I think there should be an audit of the declining enrollment, how it's affecting this budget, and what we're planning to do. Again, no information is provided to the public. You have 7,400 homes, residential homes, being planned in the Southport community. 30,004 of them were discussed last Thursday night at a planning commission meeting. 3,000 of those residents are going to create at least two new elementary schools, possibly more. The Southport schools are already inundated with students, except maybe Southport may have a little bit of wiggle room. Most importantly, how will the jobs be cut and when, and who will be cut? Is that even a contemplation? We don't know. The public does not know. And I'd like to know how many special meetings this board has had since the beginning of the school year, because it's unfounded and unnecessary. You're cutting $5 million out of the budget? And you're thinking about renting outside premises for the school district? That's ridiculous, and you need to stop this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patrice Griffith.
Good evening. On a lighter note, I would like to just introduce myself to those that aren't aware. I am a mother of three. I am a member of the Athletic Booster Athletics Club for River City, donating 25 hours of volunteer time per year just to that organization. I'm a scout leader and chartered org representative for the Scouts of America, River City High School Black Student Union Club co-advisor, and Asian Pacific Islander Club mentor. I also have a 25-plus-year career in the field of facilities, property, and project management. I wanted to update you on a few things that you were all informed of last year, one of them being the Black Student Union. We have three students who were just awarded Monday evening state-level positions on the Black Student Union Board. The first student, Kailani Griffith, is the state-level president of Black Student Union of California United. The second student is Motave H., and she will serve as Health Ambassador Level 1. She is also the president of River City BSU. Edem P. is Health Ambassador Level 2, as well as River City BSU Treasurer, and Kailani is actually Vice President of River City BSU. Never in River City's history have they had state-level representation, and now I proudly stand here to inform you that River City has three. I congratulate these students and am proud to be their mentor and advisor. Now, an update on the No Room for Hates. I want to thank Senator Henry Stern and his staff for allowing an RCHS student to shadow in his office for an entire day. Senator Stern was informed of the No Room for Hate campaign that was started by River City students last year, under my direction, with the school district supporting it 100% as well as the city of West Sacramento presenting them with a proclamation over the summer at the city's Juneteenth celebration. I want to let you all know that Senator Stern has expressed interest in supporting our students on this campaign, and we will continue meeting with him and members of his staff. I also want to thank Assembly Member Mia Bonta and her staff for engaging with our students this past summer over a student conference. Assembly Member Bonta and I actually met, as well as another student, on a separate occasion, and I thank her for welcoming us. I look forward to additional opportunities working with her in her office, as she too has expressed support for our students. And finally, National Night Out. I want to thank you all for hosting that. It was a phenomenal event, and as a community member, being able to help with that, serving cotton candy, popcorn, working the scout table, it was great. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristy McKinney.
A little taller than everybody else. Good evening, Dr. Hildreth, President Coffey, Vice President Kazadi, sorry, and trustees and cabinet. I'm here tonight to talk to you about, as a representative of the West Sacramento Police Department Chief Advisory Board and Data Transparency Project, CAB. Our police department has been dealing with significant resource restraints from filling vacancies and recruiting difficulties. The department has lost officers, recruits to other departments in the region because of significant differences in salary, retirements, and several officers out on medical leave. The good news is, the department has received funding from the city to increase pay for officers, which has allowed the department to be more competitive in their recruiting of officers. The department has also been working on a new data system that will allow the community as well as the department to be able to look at criminal data by heat. The city of West Sacramento is divided up into three heats or areas. The new system launches the first quarter of 2025, and I share all of this to provide perspective of the challenges that our police department has been dealing with. When Washington Unified made the decision to discontinue having SROs, those officers were returned to patrol to protect our city. The respective resource constraints are important to call out to help the board and the community to understand the challenges within our police department. However, those should not be the reason we don't move forward to find ways to keep our students, parents, teachers, staff, and administrators safe. What does being safe at school mean? If you were to ask a student, a parent or guardian, a teacher or administrator, you'd get a different answer. You would get a different answer if you even asked someone who was on a K-8 campus versus our high school, our middle college, high school, or Yolo High School. Everyone has different wants and needs to feel safe. To ensure that the district takes a holistic approach by creating a safe school community, it's important to hold listening sessions with all of our key stakeholders, including our community partners, businesses, police, and fire, to talk about what the future of school, youth, safety, a sense of safety should be for our city and for our school districts. The naming convention of SRO, or School Resource Officer, may be a barrier to a productive discussion about what the future can be for a formal WSPD partnership. There are many stories from across the country where the SRO... There are many stories from across the country where the SRO was the heavy for the school administrators. That is neither the role of West Act Police Department that they want, nor is it the role that the school district should want you to play, to want them to play.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Grihalva.
Okay. Isn't that the parent that blocked the trail by River City High School? That is wonderful. I haven't been here for a while, so thank you for this opportunity to speak. In fact, I'm very glad to be here again. Board members, President, good evening, staff. My name is Maria Grihalva, and I am the Latino Information and Resource Center founder and CEO. And I wanted to introduce myself for those that may not be familiar with my work. I am the nonprofit organization that brought district elections to the school board and, most recently, to city council. And so this is something I'm very, very proud of because district elections empower marginalized communities, and it gives a political voice to people that are people of color. And why is that necessary? Because racism is real, very, very, very real. In fact, Yolo County passed a resolution recognizing racism as a barrier. But as you all know, we have November elections coming up, and I wanted to thank Kobe Pazadi for serving and for the time that you've given to us. And I think that it's important that the community know, especially people that vote and residents, that when I was before these board members, you weren't here, of course, and Norma Alcala was here, these three board members were not really in favor of district elections. It's so sad to share that. It's really, really sad. And so I think that, as the association report was saying, it's time for the representation to reflect, the board representation to reflect the population. And here we have a representation right here. We have another representation over here. And then as far as the classified staff being mistreated, Maria Garcia was a yard duty staff member once upon a time, and to this day, she's really treated bad, and you just saw what happened. She went to get a copy of something, and they treated her like crap. And so anyway, thank you for being here, Ms. Coffey. And what the population doesn't realize is that if we have three conservative votes, or three votes that vote no on on a good measure, you know, it doesn't matter that we have someone like Virginia Coffey on board. And that's really the way it works, unfortunately. And so if we have three votes that go no, no, no progress, then that's the way it happens. So anyway, I just wanted to bring this information forward and to share it with everyone because civic participation is so important. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Our last one?
Yes, our last general public comment request is from Dr. Amber Bradley.
Before I'm on my time, as a government teacher, thanks for saying that. I appreciate it. Yes, all the civic engagement. Sorry, I'm taller than these folks.
It's okay.
All right. Okay, starting now. Good evening. My name is Amber Bradley. I'm a Government and Ethnic Studies teacher at River City. I have my doctorate in Educational Research, which I study police in public schools in California. In California, we have 400,000 students who attend a school with a cop but no counselor. We are funding the symptoms, not the problem, and we are not funding prevention. At River City, we have a counselor ratio of 1 to over 400 students, when the American School Counselor Association recommends the ratio of 250 to 1. WSD has a severe lack of support staff for students as they struggle with mental health issues. Teachers and police do not have the years of training and expertise needed to support children through this ongoing crisis. Adding police to our school campuses increases the impact of the school-to-prison pipeline. The school-to-prison pipeline is a system where students are pushed out of schools and pushed into the criminal justice system. The data shows that students of color and students with disabilities are more likely to be suspended or expelled in California's public schools. River City has its own disproportionate suspension rates for students of color and students with disabilities. You can see it on our dashboard or ask our administrators to share the referral information with you. Introducing police to that equation results in higher arrest rates and criminal records for these children. In a comprehensive study of SROs in the United States over a 40-year period, evidence shows that police do not make schools any safer. They increase the arrest rates of students of color and students with disabilities. The research shows that there is also a correlation between lower high school graduation rates for these specific populations of students as well. Often, school shooters will specifically choose sites with SROs because they have suicidal tendencies. Introducing armed officers on school campuses is irresponsible and dangerous for students. SROs in the state of California are only required to have 40 hours of training on how to work with students. They can complete this training within two years of the start of their employment. Meanwhile, counselors, psychologists, teachers, were all required to have years of experience before we're allowed to work with children, and we aren't armed. Corporal punishment has been outlawed in California for teachers since 1986, but you know who can put their hands on a student? Police officers. I'm not trying to discredit the work that police officers do, but they do not have enough funding to patrol the city of West Sacramento as needed now. How will the city be better off if those officers are spread even more thin with the responsibility of patrolling our children in schools? School safety is an undeniable issue for WSD, but employing an armed officer is not the answer. It is a potentially dangerous Band-Aid over a serious issue of resources and services. We need to fund more counselors, more mental health services, more behavior specialists, and actually fund and implement restorative justice programs. The safest communities are the communities that have the most resources, not the most police. Please examine the bigger picture, evaluate the research, and fund mental health services for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we are on to our information items. We have one information item. Well, while they're figuring that out, we're going to go ahead and go on to the informational item up for discussion, and that is the District Safety and School Resource Officer Discussion. I'd like to remind you, this is a discussion, and there is no voting on this discussion item.
Good evening, trustees and Superintendent Hildreth, staff and community and employees. Tonight, I'm joined by Director Dr. J. Burns, who leads our Student Services Department. And tonight, for this information item, he will lead us in a presentation to the board related to school safety and school resource officers.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Streak. Board of Trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, thank you for having us tonight. We were tasked with bringing back information regarding an SRO discussion. So we're going to take you through some safety data and some safety supports and some other things that we've been doing with safety. I feel like I need to raise this up. I feel like I'm tall, but I'm really not. I want to make myself feel better. So today, we want to provide the trustees with information regarding safety in the WSD. Review student and staff data, review student supports, review safety preventative measures, and review basics of potential SRO. Next slide, please. I did that because you got up. I know. You look at safety, safety's, I don't know, I just start thinking about Maslow's hierarchy needs. Safety, safety, safety. Safety comes in so many different ways. And what do we mean by safety? Go for it. Thank you. We want students and staff to feel both emotionally safe and physically safe, to feel safe within our schools and places of work, feel cared about and heard. I like to reiterate that, to feel cared about and heard. Be surrounded by trusting and supportive friends, families, adults, colleagues, peers, and leadership. Let's see how fast Mario is. Next slide. Oh, don't, don't. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So this was our student survey data. Okay, and we went and we compared two years of data for students who felt safe at school. 2023, 24 versus 22, 23. We have a slight difference over that year. Then the next piece, we had students feel cared about by adults. Just to give you a little background on this, we changed our metrics that we were using. So we have, this year, we had students feel cared about by adults. We couldn't connect it to an indicator from last year to show what that growth looked like, what it was, just to give you a little background. Next slide. Now, this is our positive behavioral interventions and supports survey that we gave our staff. And as you can see, staff feel safe at school, 2023, 24, 90.8%. I feel safe when entering and leaving my school building. This is staff again, 2023, 24, 92.7%. We hope to give this survey again this year. Last year was the first year in PBIS that we gave this to our staff. We're going to give it next year, so we have comparative data. Next slide. Now, let's delve into student discipline, please. Next slide. Now you can see the breakdowns. 487 incidents of suspension last year, as opposed to 2022, 23, 794 total events for the year. Some things to think about is, up until 2020, July 1st, 2020, students could be suspended for willful defiance or disruption, meaning that someone saying no could lead to being suspended or causing a disruption on a school's campus, could be suspended, no longer. And now, as of July 1st of this year, all the way through 12th grade, we can no longer suspend for defiance or disruption. In addition to due to implementation strategies such as restorative justice, suspension rates have decreased due to alternative methods to discipline other than... Next slide. Now, we broke it down, 48900, the ed code. This is the California Education Code. This is what we use. We don't use the penal code. 48900A1 is physical injury, cause or attempt or threat. 48900A2 is willful force or violence on another. And look at the comparison numbers. Now, I think the key notes, when we tell the story here, the total number of incidents for DE, so when we say discipline event A1, could also be counted in discipline event A2. It can also go both ways. And then when we talk about A1 and A2, this can be used when someone was in a fight. A1 can be used when someone's threatening to fight, right? Posturing, threatening, making verbal threats. A2, willful force can be used for someone pushing another. We just want clarification that you can see that. So if someone shoves someone, you can get A2. Next slide. Now, once you see the expulsions, last year, this past school year, we had three expulsions. 22, 23, we had zero. 21, 22, we had nine. Next slide. Student supports. Let's go. So when you start highlighting things up here, alternatives to suspensions, things that we've implemented as a district to support kids, we heard other people talk. It's not just one thing. It's a myriad of things that we want to mesh together to support our children on our campuses, number one. In the past, this past year, we gave our Kelvin SEL survey. Before that, we gave the PASS survey. This is a survey to survey our students on social-emotional barriers, right? To check in with them, see what their needs are, and then connect them up with supports, mental health supports such as a school social worker or Victor Community Support Services. And then you see, we talked about our social workers and youth outreach specialists, right? We talked about our counseling groups, our social-emotional learning groups, our attendance interventions, our mending matters and Navigate 360. That's an alternative to suspension. These are things that we teachable moments where we sit down with kids and we try to think about. It's not just a consequence, right? We're thinking about how do we change behaviors when we start talking about mending matters, Navigate 360, restorative practices. Once again, we're talking about how do we restore it? Suspension doesn't necessarily change behaviors. It's the teachable moment that changes behaviors. Some other things that come up, we've had groups like Greenlight Get Outside, working on our various campuses with mentors. They even have a therapist, and they do the teachable lessons that we keep talking about, behavioral-changing lessons, team building, asset building. And I don't want to leave out our after-school program. These are another thing that we loop around, that we wrap around kids to empower them and help raise them. Next slide, please. Okay, I wanted to show you some of the increases we've made over the years, okay? So now we have CSMs, right? Before that, before we had campus security monitors, we had campus aids. And now we have campus security monitors at Yolo High School, one, and the rest, the other six, over at River City High School, okay? And then I want to talk about that, about the staff that we've changed over the years. And the board's been instrumental in this. The school board's been instrumental. So if you start thinking, we went from eight psychologists to 11. We went from three nurses to four. We went from four school social workers. Wait. Wait, I want to reiterate that. Our youth outreach specialists, we now have 11. We went from seven to 11. We have a fit and foster specialist, right? That's our unhoused youth and our foster specialist who works with them. We now have community school facilitators, four, right? Four sites. And we have wellness centers on our campus, a big investment in wellness center. Next slide. Let's talk about safety prevention, please. Ongoing professional development focused on safety. As many of you know, we use a consultant who we've been working with. And one of the things that we're trying to work on is behavioral threat assessment training. We're going to work on, what does that look like in our district? What does our team look like to address behavioral threats? School site vulnerability assessments, that's something that came out of the grand jury report. And with those school site vulnerability assessments, we've been assessing our campuses to see what kind of needs. Anything from a tree being too low and restricting our vision points or things on campus so we can see, to even doors locked during a school day, to do we have a doorbell on the front door now at school, and the school's door is locked, and now we have a camera, right? And then we buzz people in. It's the world we live in. Standard response protocols. I love it. You know, I love to say this because the standard response protocols we use is, I love you guys. And it's my chance to tell everybody I love them, and it's also our chance to keep them safe on our campuses. Campus security monitors training, we just finished it again. One year, we have to certify them, and then the next year, we revisit what we certified on. And we're on a two-year cycle with our CSM. District Safety Committee meetings, Catapult EMS. When I say Catapult EMS, it's a tool we use. It's a tool we use in emergencies. Back in the day, we would sit here and we would hold up a red sign, or Teacher Kirby Gonzalez would get on the phone and say, I have four kids in my classroom. Here's their names. Now, we can be on a phone, we can be on a computer, a Chromebook, an iPad, and it's real time. We can account for every student, every staff member. We can drop a PIN. I can notify the police. We can look at it and show them where our people are on our campus, and we can communicate. Anonymous reporting. It's online. Thank you to Yorgos. He's worked with us on this. We have anonymous reporting. It used to be anonymous tip, right? You had to call it in. You had the hotline or drop something off. Now it's online. It can be texted. It can be through the internet. And then monthly meetings, it's ongoing. Something to think about with safety is, it's never set in stone, right? So we keep going, and then we keep reteaching. We revisit, and we keep talking about things that go on, scenarios, and how we can address them. And you'll see in the next slide, a lot of these scenarios, too, I'm sitting down with the police. Next slide, please. So, safety procedures and practices. Continue to work with our safety consultant to address the grand jury findings. Complete annual comprehensive school safety plans, those will be coming up. We've been working on them. They're real time. We're constantly working on them. One of the things with comprehensive school safety plans are going to be coming to the board very soon for approval in October. Before that, we're going to bring it up in September to have you look at it for a review. Before that, we're going to bring it up in September to have you look at it for a review. If you have any input, you'll give it to us. And then we're going to bring it back around October eleventh-ish or twelfth for the final approval. Fourth year district-wide PBIS implementation, the amazing Dr. Moscarenas is overseeing that. We're changing behaviors, it's positive, right? It's positive. Restorative practices, SEL, PBIS, we're trying to catch the kids being good. If we see some things pop up on our campus, we're going to inoculate the kids against them. I know that sounds funny, but we change behaviors. We reteach behaviors. Twenty-four to one, twenty-four times, we keep teaching it over and over again. And multi-tiered student support, MTSS. MTSS is amazing. We sit down, we talk about every child by name and need. We talk about the kids on our campus. And then we talk about coordination of services. Do they need social work? Do we need to do a home visit? Do we need to talk with our education-related mental health specialist? What do we have in place? And then we talk about our collaboration with West SAC PD, and I am grateful for them. They are so responsive. I text them, I call them, I email them, and they're like, oh, it's Jay. Monthly meetings with West SAC PD to review safety, right? We just sat down with the high school to get ready for football season. We had a talk, we walked through it. Are we ready for our home games? What does that look like? What did we go through last year? What are things we want to tweak? What works well? What do we need to get rid of and what do we need to tweak? Review policies and procedures for upcoming sporting events, just talked about. Meeting with our juvenile diversion counselor, Kelly Kajenko, she's been great to work with. Regular meetings and community outreach, right? This is working with Taylor Nelson and we've done camps, right? Done a lot of camps, we've done everything from explorers to camps. We just teamed up with them for National Night Out. Not to mention United Way and everybody else in the community. But West SAC PD was instrumental in this. And so was the mayor. Next slide. So I kind of wanted to talk about some things that we still have contracted, right? We have our football games, right? We have two officers who come out to our home games. Four hours each officer, subject to change if we go into overtime, right? As long as we're winning, as long as we're winning. How do you win and go into overtime? I don't know. It's a tie game. But I want you to look at the prices up here and what we've been paying out. And then additional, during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the WSPD was contacted twenty times by school administrators for filing police reports. This is schoolroom administrators calling it in. Broke it down, you'll see in parentheses by school site, Bridgeway, Elkhorn, Riverbank, Southport, Stonegate, Westfield, Wesmore Oak. Our virtual academy, River City High, Washington Middle College High School, and Yolo. This is the administrator calling in a police report. Next slide. Now we want to walk you through what an SRO is. Let's take it there. And this is just some basic duties that SRO does. There's more to this. Direct student contact and general presence on district campuses is determined by the district. I think that's key, as determined by the district. Provide enforcement assistance with the district for students and/or families failing to respond to the district's SARP. Students attendance review requests and/or agreements. It sounds stern, I want to be careful with that. We're very restorative in what we do for our students who are dealing with chronic absenteeism. We want them to know that we love them. We're going to wrap our arms around them and give them resources and support them. Involvement with parents, family, and community activities related to this project. Just jumping in, anything you can think of. You can talk about programs, diversion programs, from great to dare, anything and other things. Provide surveillance, intelligence, investigations, and enforcement activities. Provide education about drugs, once again, dare, right? Great, any of these kind of programs to the district staff and parents upon request. We can do parent nights, parent universities. Actively assist in the supervision of their primary school assignment. Respond to emergency calls to other school sites as needed. Next slide. This slide is a breakdown. This came from the MOUs, the contracts that we've had in the past with PD. So what the contracts always read, not to exceed this amount. So in two thousand twenty, when this came to the board, we did not have, as a two thousand twenty on, we did not have school resource officers. We were proposing one, it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars potentially, not to exceed that. Two thousand eighteen was two. Two thousand sixteen was two. Once again, not to exceed these costs that you see up here. An officer can frequently work past their contracted time in response to site or district needs. Vehicle training and equipment. The city may require the district to cover the cost of the officer having a police vehicle to perform their duties as a school resource officer. As well as trainings and/or additional equipment. Potential annual contract increase due to the COLA cost of living and equipment needs. Next slide. Thank you.
All right, do we have any, I believe we have public comments?
Yes, we have three public comments on this item.
All right.
Our first public comment is from Ruth Pagano-Turn.
Hi, I'm Ruth Pagano-Turn. I'm also a parent in this district. I have two amazing students, one at Southport Elementary and one at River City High School. Here's the facts. West SAC Police is on our camp, they're on our campuses now. I see them on our campuses. My children see them. They have uniforms on, they have their firearms on because that's what officers wear. They don't not wear their uniforms. Now, their uniforms could look different. Plainclothes officers exist, but they still have their tools and their duty belts. West SAC PD responded last year to threats, risk assessments, violence, et cetera, et cetera. They are at every single football game, as just discussed. Wearing their uniforms, carrying their tools that are firearms to keep themselves safe and everybody around them. Their cars are also marked for reasons like public safety. For about a decade or so, I worked with SROs. I watched officers like Sean Saylor and Mark Kirkland spend years and years supporting our students both in and out of the classrooms. They attended sporting events, they gave drug awareness and prevention presentations, and organized supportive, which is now what we call restorative, meetings with students, parents, and staff. They were remarkable. I'm asking you as a parent to consider doing what other surrounding districts already do. The Sacramento region has SROs. Please bring back police support. We already have community partnerships with them. There are already police presences on our campuses. What kind of relationship do we want to have with these officers? Do we want them just responding to emergencies or do we want them to know our children? For our children to know them, that is the benefit of an SRO. Deterrence to crime truly cannot be measured because it's a presence of the police that's a deterrent to the crime. We don't actually know how much crime is being stopped or thwarted. I don't think there's research that can ever get us that information. It's so important to understand that the reality is, is that there are students who are afraid of a gunman as well.
Thank you.
Our next speaker on this topic is Eleanor Sanchez.
Good evening. Short. Good evening. I'm a parent of a Washingtonified School District student and a special education paraprofessional. As Doug mentioned earlier, school resource officers are a sensitive topic, especially for some of our student population. And I agree that this topic needs to be thought out carefully for our teachers, our students, and our staff. As a high school special education paraprofessional, I have seen and experienced firsthand the physical behaviors and fights that have occurred inside and outside of our classroom between students. I have personally separated students who were beating each other up to make sure that neither of them died in that situation. It puts our teachers and our classified staff in the front lines of these altercations and it puts their safety at risk. When students fight inside the classroom and outside, it not only affects our staff, but it also affects our students. Our students are scared and they are triggered. At my site, we do not have a resource officer or security guard. And every time an altercation happens, they ask, why don't we have one? We are scared. We don't want to come back if this is going to continue. We need to keep in mind the health and safety of our students, teachers, and classified staff and administrators. The benefits of an SRO could help support our students and staff in physical crisis situations. They can also help build a bridge and relationship between law enforcements and students. I really encourage you guys to really, you know, take a look at this and keep our students in mind. I understand that there are challenges with an SRO for some of our student population. But if you don't feel that an SRO is going to benefit our students, we need to put something in place to help protect our classified staff, our teachers, and our administrators. And we also need to help protect our students and special populations as well.
Thank you.
Our next speaker on this topic is Kristi McKinney.
So naming, the naming convention SRO, school resource officer, may be a barrier to a productive discussion about what the future can be for a formal WUSD and police department partnership. There are many stories across the country where the SRO was the heavy for the school administrators. That is neither the role of the West SAC Police Department that they want nor the role that the school district should play. The police department wants to build a strong, build strong relationships with the youth in our city. They want to build trust. They want to create a collective sense of civic responsibility. They want to promote the notion that the community safety is everyone's responsibility. They also want to be seen as a viable and noble profession that should attract students from our community. Chief Strange couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted the board to know that he loves the idea of having staff at each school, but not necessarily with the primary focus of on traditional police work. He thinks a future where our officers are a part of the education and leader-making environment is something that he can get behind and likely behind at some point. Some of the things that I think may help in this regard, not necessarily around safety, but just in helping build our recruitment pipeline in our city for keep our kids here who may have an interest in becoming police officers is looking at possibly having a youth police academy at River City or ROTC program similar to what McClatchy has to help build that or as well as develop a youth court on campus that's run by students that are interested in pursuing careers in criminal justice. So there are just a few things, few ways of partnership in working together. Some of the mechanisms that are used at my son's high school and some other high schools in the Sacramento area. I know bathrooms can be a place where high school students don't feel safe and don't use during the day because there's kids in there smoking and doing other things. So vaping detectors, quarterly campus visits by police dogs, and hiring campus security officers instead of police. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker on this topic is Dr. Amber Bradley.
All right, my first comment was much more prepared and researched, so this kind of off the cuff, sorry. Okay, so thank you, Dr. Burns, for your presentation. I appreciate it, lots of information there. Some of the reasons that he provided for SROs were having things like dare. Dare has been proven to not work. There's decades worth of research on dare that it was not a successful program. So we don't want to use that as a reason we should have police officers. They can also be used for admin support. SROs can help out our administrators. But this could also lead to simple teenage mistakes escalating to a criminal record. Kids are not necessarily able to learn from their mistakes because they could get arrested for these mistakes that they can do in high school or middle school, God forbid. Also, stopping fights. River City right now has six campus monitors, as we said. They get paid much less than this one hundred and twenty K, which was a twenty-twenty price. We know that price tag is definitely higher. So we already have six campus monitors. They can't necessarily be everywhere at once. And yet, we're expecting one SRO to be able to handle over twenty-two hundred students and be able to stop fights at a high school? That doesn't seem very realistic to me. Others brought up that local area high schools have this in Sacramento. SAC City ended their police contract in twenty-twenty. They had three SROs and they ended that in twenty-twenty. So SAC City no longer has police either. Also, just a question for you all to consider. When do you call a cop? After something has happened, right? We are focusing on what happens after. We are not focusing on preventing these issues to begin with, okay? You've already had an SRO. They actually had an entire police department for their schools. But that didn't stop what happened there. In fact, they had three hundred officers come to their campus and it didn't save a single life. Because we need to be focused on prevention instead of being focused on being responsive to these events after they happen. We are a community school district. I implore you to ask the community, what makes them feel safe? Because the privilege in this room does not reflect our community. Let's continue to fund community schools. Let's fund the efforts that Dr. Burns just mentioned. Let's fund what we're talking about with community schools, the things that Dr. Moscarenas is working on or was working on, that June Flores is working on. We have some excellent programs that we're currently doing and we could really use that money instead of paying for one SRO to be funding community schools and doing preventative work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Oh yeah, I was going to ask Jackie or Al. Do you guys have anything for? Okay.
I know this is important to Vice President Zari, so I'll have him go first.
No, he wishes to wait.
I appreciate the presentation and the data. I don't know.
We're going to move it here, we can hear.
Is the mic on?
Yeah, it is. They said they can hear you.
Okay. Hey, Al. I appreciate the presentation and it looks like our data and statistics are going the wrong way, the right way in investments so far, right? We were expecting a lift like everybody else in the nation and the region right after COVID because of a number of different reasons. My wondering, I think it's already been said today, is that we have to save five million ongoing. And there were a lot of questions posed by, you know, our labor partners from WSTA. And I think there's just a lot of wonder that I have. And whether or not we should actually do a deeper dive and include the entire community about what this could and should mean. Being deeper into what type of services specifically, not necessarily a human, right? Like, it's about service. It's about what is it, what is it the thing that we're trying to get at? And talking to, again, and it sounds like Chief Strange is open, what the reimagining looks like, but not necessarily from a human person, you know, perspective. I like the idea of a police academy. I talked about it at a two-by-two before. And because we also know that we have a shortage of public safety officers in West Sacramento, so how do we create that pipeline? We talk about pipelines for a lot of other things in our communities. So the idea of that and a youth board or a justice academy where you're actually training people, training young people as a career path. And so kind of different ways of imagining what this looks like and what... It's not about the SROs. And I've talked to Vice President Zari about this. What is the thing that we're looking at? What is the surface? What is the thing that we're trying to get out of this partnership with WS, you know, West SAC PD? Which I'm going to acknowledge, I think they've stepped up in many ways in response time and other things. So I think I'm just going to pose that question. Like, when we think about this, when we're having this as discussion, those things for consideration. And how would you invite the community, including our labor partners, into like really drilling down what that is?
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay, and thank you, I appreciate the conversation. I have a lot of notes, they're all over, so I'll try to be concise as I go through. I think we've been having this conversation for, well, first of all, of course, I, you know, did ride along with Officer Bowers, I watched him buy our kids bikes and, you know, with his own money. And just we, we've been very blessed to have some really good partners and relationships doing good work for our kids. And so I appreciate the work that, that has been done in the past and an opportunity to, I think, as it was said by Ms. McKinney and Chief Strange has said to us as well, to reimagine a role. And I really appreciate that with the community's work. I also appreciated, Dr. Bradley, your comments, and I did read your dissertation. And so you are heard too, I want you to know that. I think for me, when we talk about when do we call the police? I obviously spend my days on school campuses and I've spent a lot of time on our campuses. For, for most of my time here, I've, Fridays have been my time in Washington Unified volunteering. And I have had to pick up the phone and call West Sacramento Police Department as staff was like sheltering in place. And they said, oh, we've already been called, your classified staff called. And so our staff, we know they're calling, I know your data showed it. It didn't show district office, which I know is also had multiple calls this year as well. And, and that call is a very hard one to make when you don't have a relationship. Of course, we have a relationship with the Police Department. But when you know that they're stretched thin and you know that somebody coming on campus does not know your education policy, they don't know your kids and the families in the same way. And this is not a fault, this is not a negative comment on our West Sac Police Department, so please don't take it that way. And when I called, I said, you know what, I think it's an escalated situation, you know, just be sensitive with it. You know, I was talking it through because that call was hard to make when you don't know who's going to show up. And then the person who came had to wait for their partner. And then they had, I mean, because they didn't have a relationship or know the situation. And, and I think that is less safe than having a, somebody who can be dedicated. But I think to the points that were brought up today in a way that is really done with the community. We talked about, some people brought up, what is the standard for an SRO? We don't have to follow any of that. I mean, because this is an MOU that we create with the Police Department. This is a partnership that we can create together. How much training is there? What kind of training is there that can be done together? And I don't necessarily think that that's our role on the dais. I think that we, we give direction, but I think having our staff work together with our Police Department, with our labor partners, with the community is to me what makes the most sense moving forward. And I see this, oh, sorry, we keep losing them on, I was doing an update earlier. But I see this as one piece of a very comprehensive set of systems for our kids. Our SEL systems, our, you know, I see this as one piece. This is not the one thing that is going to keep us. We need to do many, many things in our district. The other thing that there's access to with whatever this role looks like, they have access to databases that we don't have access to. So when I made that call and we were concerned and there was a car that drove up and, and a very hostile situation, not with one of our students, they can run that license plate. I can't run a license plate. Our school staff can't run a license plate. They can also monitor social media in a way that we cannot do. So I think that, that in those places, there is a lot of opportunity for partnership. It was brought up tonight, it's been brought up with Chief Strange, it's been brought up many times, that there is a shortage of our Police Department, we understand that. And we're not looking to stretch that more thin. We're looking to make sure that we have some dedicated supports, I think, at least I am. I don't want to speak for my colleagues. So as, as, oh, there I am talking. So I think those are the things that I'm considering and thinking of as I think through this. But to me, it's very important that this is one of a big comprehensive piece for our kids and support. And it's very important to me that our staff and our community and the, and the West Sac Police Partners help with what this looks like on our campuses and for our kids.
Thank you.
So I took down a lot of notes, this might be a little disjointed. And, you know, one of the things that I heard was, you know, the short staffing. And I fully recognize that. And this is my shameless plug for Measure O. Because we need to pass Measure O to ensure that there is funding to increase the wages that recruit and retain West Sac Police Department. So having said that, this is again, my shameless plug, support Measure O. So on that point, there was also, you know, a comment about, yes, once the West Sac PD, or once we got rid of our SRO, they went back to West Sac PD. That's not true. Our last West Sac PD or SRO retired. So the SRO retired. The position would have gone back, but the person did not. So we lost an SRO who was, and it was Officer Bowers, who was critical to the fabric of who we are as a district and to the outreach, the outreach coordinators and the home to school liaison, as well as some of the correctional, or not correctional, but the counselors that we had here. He was keeping kids from going down that pipeline, school to prison pipeline. So yes, it, it hurt when Bowers was, was let go. And, you know, the way it happened was terrible and it shouldn't have been happening. At least now we're having a conversation and a discussion that includes the community. That includes, we're being inclusive about how we go about this. There are a couple of things that I think we need to consider. An SRO doesn't have to be, as explained, a uniform wearing person. They can be whatever the school district and West Sac PD decide it to be. It'll be a peace officer who has all the authority and the ability to communicate with the Police Department on the things we need, information, provide services that we need in maybe non-emergent situations that we shouldn't be calling 911, but we would certainly be calling our SRO for help, right? I have this vivid memory of a student jumping the fence and running at Bridgeway Island and escaping out and Dr. Buffico having to chase down, chase down this, this kid to try and get him back into class. Help from an SRO would have been lovely, would have been awesome. But that's not somebody you would necessarily call 911 for, right? Additionally, you know, the response time for the situation that Christy Kirby Gonzalez was talking about would have been much better. You know, it would have been within, you know, five or so minutes. That has not always been the case. You know, our situation at the district office where somebody came onto the district office campus took much longer than if we would have had a school resource officer to provide a response. And it wasn't emergent, but it was certainly would have been helpful. Additionally, we had, we had a situation where a suspected firearm got onto our high school campus. That would have been very nice to have an SRO on the to at least protect and keep the situation contained to the front office. So there are many things that I think we can reimagine and we can relook at how an SRO is supposed to be. One of those things is as an educational component. We can't, we can't expect our children to feel comfortable with police officers until they are educated about police. And it's our responsibility to educate. That's what we do. We educate kids, right? We want them to be comfortable with something, then we educate them about something. And that's what, you know, Officer Bowers did for a very long. He was in, he was a part of the fabric of our school system. And so the educational component made kids more, not less. And yes, there are times when a deterrent happens. There is that turn of seeing a peace officer on campus does provide a deterrent effect. There was a comment about police dogs. I do support that. The bathrooms are a problem at our, at our high school. And I would think that would be certainly something to do, but I would say in addition to, not instead of. See. There was another thing, you know, West Sac PD are like, they're already a part of our campus. You, you had a great slide on there, Dr. Burns, said 20 times they've been called, right? You know, out of 10 months, that's pretty high, right?
Police reports.
Yeah, and that's just, right, that's just police. So to me, I think, and that didn't include the district office, right? So to me, you know, that's a significant portion. And I don't want kids seeing, you know, police officers on campus in an emergent situation. I don't want to see that. That's how you build up resentment. That's how you build up hostility and fear. I want them to be feeling more comfortable and learn about police officers. And, you know, my perspective would be ingraining the, the SROs or whatever you call them, doesn't even have to be called an SRO. But some form of peace officer into the fabric to provide assistance and to protect and serve our kids and our staff is necessary. Uh, let's see. Also, you know, West Sac PD officers, they're a part of our community already. They live here. They work here. They have their kids go to school here. I see them at the store. See them at football games. They're coaches on our Little League teams. So I, I take a little lumberage when I, I hear the idea that we're not comfortable necessarily having a peace officer on our campus. They're already a part of our fabric of our community. One of the questions that I kind of want to also get to was how many lockdowns did we have? You know, in the last four years? You know, that's something that we can consider. You know, I'm not sure how many we had when we had SROs or versus post this, or, you know, that would be an interesting, an interesting call. So that's something we could go.
All right. So I hear what everybody is saying. Everybody has definitely their perspective and their valid point in, in everything. From the, the lack of police officers to issues that they can bring with trauma from some of our students and some of our community members. I did have a question with what you had on your slide, Dr. Burns. If you can help me, it was the potential cost for a school resource officer. Now, previous salary and benefit costs, I think it was like your second till pretty much the last page.
Yes.
So on that, it had a cost per MOU. And I looked at the years and it seems to be every two years. Does this mean that this 120,000 is what would have been used within two years? Or is it saying that is how much it would have been yearly?
Was yearly and each MOU was different. Some MOUs for two years, some were one year. I went into our agendas, past agendas and downloaded and what I found was a two-year increment.
Okay, because I wasn't sure what you were saying was cost per MOU. This was the MOU of 2020 and so that one MOU was
A two-year.
Two years, and so that was the amount, maximum amount.
Right, not, not to exceed that. And remember, we're contributing, right? The PD is also paying part of the salary as well. The city is also paying.
And that's why I was asking, is this a full one year or is this a two, like was a two-year?
I would have to dig in deeper and get back to you on the MOUs. I have them all downloaded and sitting on my desk.
Awesome. I would like to know that just because it kind of gives me a perspective of what we are, what we're looking to into possibly, you know, if we were to proceed with this, what, what we're looking at. I do believe that there, that I, a way for me to, okay, you're going to laugh at how I remember Chief Strange. I always called him Dr. Strange because that is legit how I remember his last name. So, and every time I see him, I'm like, I gotta remember. So I'm a marvels girl, I'm sorry. So in the past, before even being on the school board, I had lots of conversations with him. And I know how much he has and wants to invest in the community and how much he really wants to bridge that gap of like, we're not bad, we are here and we care. He's at football games, he's at baseball games, he's saying, talking to kids outside of his uniform and having that conversation and that dialogue. He and the, all of West Sac PD putting on camps and clinics for the kids to play football out there at River City. Like showing events so that way they are, they do not feel afraid. And to be quite honest, I really think that that has made an impact because we're starting off with the youngins and now they're seeing as they get older, you know, they're getting older and they see him and he sees them and it's like, oh yeah, I know who that is. He sees me, he knows who I am. And I think it starts, you know, it starts there. We have to start somewhere. So this is literally just a discussion. And yes, we do need to make sure we engage with our community. This is not the platform. I'm going to be honest, I don't believe this is the platform that reaches our community because our community is out there and doesn't always come. I mean, when you get recorded, it could be a little daunting and you're fumbling over your words and you want to say something, but then you're afraid that you misspeak and then there's a lot. So if we are going to engage with our community and make sure that we hear their true voice, then we need to make sure that we, that we do that. Whether that's at, at each school site or a neutral site, however it is. But definitely bring it and let's, let's find out what does our community want? Because in all honesty, I, the people that I talk to, they, they don't mind because they built that relationship. So, but then I don't know everybody. So that's why I'm saying I'd rather hear, you know, my community, my community's voice. Anything else?
I would just ask President Coffey that we give some kind of direction so that we know where we are for next time in terms of what that, what that next step looks like, staff and what you're thinking. And shout out to their ice cream truck too, by the way.
Oh yeah, we love that ice cream truck.
And shout out to you for all the work that you're doing too, for all the people.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what you're saying. And what this looks like can be a multiple things. And it should be what, you know, the, the community wants. Right, and our kids, agreed. I think given our, our budget situation, we need to give clear direction about financially, this is what we want to do. So we need to set aside money in order to protect that money for how we are going to create the situation. So if we're going into, you know, budget constraint, we're going to have to make cuts at places, right? In order to make this happen, we would have to at least say, you know, give direction to the district to say, we need to set aside, you know, X number of dollars. Say, we need to set aside, you know, X number of dollars for, you know, the two-year agreement. City pays half, we pay, we pay. And we will decide based on what the, the community wants this to look like, right? That's what we can do. But if we don't have the funding set aside for that, right? Then this will take multiple, multiple years to get it to happen. And like I said, this is a, you know, gameless plug for measure O. If we, if we support measure O, this can happen sooner. But if there's, you know, no measure O, the situation with West Sac PD is not going to get much better sooner, right? So the idea behind setting aside an allotment of funds is something that I think we should probably do as a board, um, and give direction to the district to do.
I see Jackie.
Thanks, President Coffey. I think what Pat just said, we just had a budget study session and we had a process that we, we're going through. We're about to ask staff to start to cut. And I, I think it's, in terms of budgeting, I want to follow the fidelity of that. I think that it's important for us and we, we've all spoken with Chief Strange and he has a work. I, I would actually encourage us to work with his advisory and the community on what this could look like because they're also thinking of the same thing, right? So that it's not just us alone, by the way, that, that the community sees us together and planning together. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Right. And I, at this point, I don't know the dollar amount and I don't know, we literally just, uh, you know, had a whole session on what we're going to do to have staff put $5 million on going. And I think it's important to honor that process, right? Because you set this aside, but what do we, what, what do our staff have to give up? It, it, it's just, it's a hard thing to say right now to do that. Considering that we just provided direction to, to our staff.
I think, um, a piece of that is, um, and I do appreciate that. And I think very aware of where we are in our process. Um, and that this is not something that's going to be happening, um, you know, in the, in the next few months. We're not going to have this position. Um, but I do think this is something, um, and I recognize there's many voices and we need to do a lot more work, but I've been hearing from and asked about not only from our students. I've been asked by neighbors. I've been asked by parents. I've been asked by, um, the spouses of some of our administrators. Why, why we don't have a position like this for, for a really long time? And so, um, and it was asked to bring this position forward, um, quite a long time ago. And so I, I understand what you're saying. I think, um, the idea of a, of a set aside as we go into next school year, maybe it's a set aside for that. Is that what you're thinking? Um, as we have these discussions? But I think we can do both at the same time. And obviously before we hire, you know, there's an MOU we agree on. There's many, many steps down the way.
Right. So my thought was to bring back for, the request would be to bring back for action at the next board meeting, a carve out for half of, you know, the dollar amount for half of a position are split with the West Sac PD. So at least that way we know what we're looking at, um, from a budgetary standpoint. Or as we go into these, you know, these situations where we're going to be looking at certain, um, you know, consultant contracts that we might want to be cutting, right? We're basically saying this is a priority to the board and to the district that we are going to do this. And this would require us saying that we're going to set aside certain allotment of money. And that would be necessary in order for that to happen. So as I'm still talking. So I'm, I'm, so as I'm saying, you know, what my, my idea of how we do this is to just make sure we get it allocated in the budget. And the only way we can do that is with Board Act, make sure that it's something as a priority we're identifying.
And we've talked to the chief and again, going back, it's uncomfortable. They're like guessing a number because it requires a city contract. Like it feels backwards to set aside X amount of dollars without talking to the community, without talking to even our city partners about like what, 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 what is a reasonable amount? What can you share? It just, it seems a little bit backwards to do that versus why are we not doing our community assessments? Why are we not talking to what we all agree to, everybody, students, et cetera?
We have an.
And our, our, our city partner before we're talking about a dollar amount.
I think at our two by two, to make it clear, and I thought I had reported out on it, um, correctly, but just to reiterate at our two by two, the chief said, uh, we are not going, we are not supportive of bringing forward a position that is going to be cut with a change in board elections. And we are not going to support something if your board does not support it and your community does not support it. And we want to have something that's sustainable. We don't want something that is going to change with elections. Or then that's not fair to anyone. It's not fair to our kids or staff, whoever we hire. So I think the idea is, and, and I don't want to speak for anyone else, but is that we were asked to show a commitment if we're going to go this, this path. And I think that we need to show some kind of commitment, whatever that may be, that we are supportive of having these conversations and making this happen. But you're right, we need a city commitment as well. Um, but, but the person or the organization that broke that initial commitment was the school board.
Right.
And so it's the school board that needs to say, um, that, that we are committed to, to looking at this and making it happen. And there's obviously more steps that happened before. This isn't just going to be here because we say it tonight. There's going to be an MOU. There's going to be a lot more processes, but, um, but that was said very clearly to us, um, by Chief Strange.
And in addition, I mean, in addition to that, when the SRO position was taken away, it happened like that. There was no information discussion. There was no community outreach. There was no, nothing. I want to make that very clear. So to bring them back, it seems like there's a whole lot more involvement than there is than when we took them away. So I, I want that to be very, very clear. So the idea is for direction that we set aside, um, budget, a, a budgetary, uh, commitment of half of our standard MOU, what, what it was before. So whatever the new price is for a, um, police officer and their vehicle, right? So whatever that price is, a partnership with the city in which they pay for half, we pay for half. Uh, the direction would be for that to continue. But at least we know what it is that we're looking at for the future, right? That's the, for the next action item at the next board meeting. That would be my, my request.
I'm going to amend that wondering if a set aside is for a conversation about the partnership with West Sac. Cause it could be more and less of what we paid depending if it really be imagined. Right? I'm not like, it doesn't, again, I'm going to go back. It may not make sense. It may not be enough, right? Again, it's just a matter of can we talk to the city, talk to chief, what does reimagining look like? Right? Like, and land on a number. It could be more than what we paid in the past. If we're truly trying to rethink the services, the service, the thing that we're trying to do could possibly cause more and much, if it was truly engagement. So the direction I would suggest is for staff to talk to the city and come back with some options, right? About what that could be, like, if, if that makes sense. It's not about the human. Cause one human isn't for our entire, it's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the relationship, right? So it's really important to think about, let's talk to the chief and really plan this out. It's not about paying half or seventy. It, it just, can we just work them on what the right number?
The, so I would say.
Like it's a carve out of something with a partnership with West Sac. And it could be, it looked like a number of different things to your.
So I would say that it's half of a police officer's pay, right? That's the number. That's basically what it's been. If we want to add more to it, we can add more to it for certain. But the, the, the starting point is to add, um, half of a police officer's pay. That's what it seemed like it was in the past and it's a, a good starting point. But it's not going to be greater than that by much of, uh, you know, much of an argument there. If you have, say, a $200,000, um, one of the things was 200,000 for two years. Is that what it was?
Yes.
Yeah. And, yeah. So if you have that and say, we know that it's gone up 50,000 per year. So it's 300,000, right? Our, our end of that would be 150 a year, 300 every two, two years. If we wanted to add into that, say, um, high school game services or, um, you know, Saturday and Sunday or overtime work, whatever, we would be responsible for whatever we contract with, right? But I think that number can be easily found if we give the parameters that we want the same contract that we had with the West Sac PD or the MOU that we had with West Sac PD as before, highlighting the amount and that amount would be half of whatever it costs for, uh, one police officer.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Yeah. I'm just, just based on what I'm hearing, again, I'm hearing reimagining and then I'm hearing, just base it off of the original MOU. So we're still thinking service versus person, at least the way I'm understanding it. And I, and I think again, that from what I'm, if we're looking to reimagine and we're, and we're also making cuts, then we have to reimagine. We, we can't, you know, just the fact that we're making cuts and, and we have to make cuts. There is no going back to a regular MOU. It, it is what do certain, so I think we move away from the word SRO. We move towards what services can be provided by West PD, which means they need to be involved in the conversation. Like I think us attempting to put together, uh, maybe we come up with needs. They come up with what they can do and then we start to form an MOU of what's feasible. And then option A, B, C based off of, but, but they need to be involved in the conversation because we're also asking them for more than a person. So I think we, from what I'm understanding, we move away from the word SRO because it's not an SRO that we're looking to bring on campus. At this point, we can't, technically we can't afford one. If we're looking at, right, the, the idea, it, it would be looking to move it closer to services provided by West Sac PD. It just, just wanted to throw that out there because it sounds like we're just going back and forth and I just, uh, yeah, thank you.
Corey, thank you, Al. Did you have something else?
Yeah. I mean, my, okay. I think the point is that the SRO position is a peace officer position that is dedicated to, uh, WSDA. That is clear. And that's, I think.
W U S D.
W U S D.
W S D A.
Just you, all you Doug, all you man. W U S D. That is, that is clear to, it, it is a W U S D position, right? So to that end, what, what the services that we want from that position can be discussed and imagined. But the bottom line is that it has to be a peace officer and it has to be dedicated to the district. And that's where the funding source would come from. And then we can determine what we want this to look after the fact. But you have to set aside funding in order for that to be the case. And since we are having discussions about budget, this action item, say for the next board meeting, would effectively say that we are setting aside as a priority because it was taken away, um, as a priority. That we want this to come back. And so, um, that would be the act, that would be the requested action, um, for the next board meeting. Is that we have, um, set aside of half of one position that's similar to what we had in our previous MOU. To come back for act at whatever the cost of a peace officer is. So if the peace officer is a $110,000 per year, then that plus, you know, whatever half of wages and benefits, you know, that's just what it is, right? So if we have the car, whatever the car is, whatever the MOU said before, that's what it says now. But as we go forward in the future, long after I'm off of this, you'll have the ability to determine what services that you want, right? Make it look like something. And again, that would be once measure O shamelessly plugged here, measure O is.
So I want to just repeat what I'm hearing so that way, uh, I know that I'm hearing it correctly. We're not really sure of how we're going to envision this police officer, how they're going to be on the campuses per se, what types of services that they will be providing. But what we're asking is to set aside some money to ensure that we have somebody on our campuses to provide that, those services when we go to, when we go to the table with our partners. We can say, look, we are actually serious about doing this because what I'm hearing at the two by two is they do not want to discuss it unless they, we show that we're serious about coming to the table with this. And so to show that we are, this is why we're asking, this is why you are asking for this action of the board to take place at the next board meeting.
Right.
I would say I've also had recent conferences, but I'm not sure if we have to show, and, and again, I think it's a conversation. I don't know if the next board meeting is a, a direction to staff to talk to Dr., you know, Dr. Strange.
That's so sorry. That's what I do. I'm so sorry.
It's a process thing, right? Like it's just like, and quite frankly, is there a service? It's not a human. What if they don't, they don't have the money, right? At this point, it's, we're still, we, we still want to contract with them with whatever we want, like even if they didn't put money in.
No, no, no. So, no, that's not, that's not how I understood. Wait, hold, hold on. Let me make sure I'm, I understood that this is a not right now thing. This is a, hey, let's talk about it thing. Like we're serious enough to talk about it and we are, if you are interested in having this conversation, then we are coming to the table with, with the intent to be ready to, to discuss. Because from what I understood, they don't want to discuss unless we are showing that we are truly interested in pursuing this. Am I wrong or is that what I heard? Okay.
And then the other part of that was.
Yeah. Okay. So with that, um, I believe we, you, you, you set the action. Will you say what you would like the, the action to be? Discussion.
Well, no, tomorrow, the next board meeting, at the next board meeting, I would like the action to set aside half of one position. So we could say from a budgetary standpoint, we have set aside, you know, half of, of one position. So if and when measure O passes, this will allow, um, the PD to have more. Like I said, you know, they don't have the people currently to do it, right? But this will allow, measure O will allow it to happen. And so it'll be something that, um, we could potentially have moving forward. But what my, 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 um, direction was, um, next board meeting. direction was, um, next board meeting, half of one position. Or one, one full position, I should split between us and Sacramento City, or West Sacramento City. For a peace officer be dedicated to.
Okay.
That's.
And it's not act, it's discussion.
Yeah, no, this is a discussion, so that, you just.
Yeah, my wondering is, can it just follow our budget process when we adopt our budget? So I, and what I'm hearing is you want it in our budget somehow. Does it have to be next board meeting? And it has to be, and again, just to give staff time as part of all of our processing. Because the city is also going through their budgeting process. It, it, what's the, to your point, President Card, what's the hurry in two weeks from now?
Dr. Burns, is this possible for this to happen by the next board meeting?
We have to investigate and get back to you.
Okay.
So, I mean, the direction is to, uh, the direction that's being discussed is to have an act, an item ready with a dollar amount to set aside for the budget. That's all it is. Effectively, that's all it is.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure you, you can do that. I think that gives, I think that gives West Sac PD understanding that there's a firm commitment, at least from the board members who vote to support that. Um, if there are three votes for that, then, um, then it would go forward and we would have it set aside. And then the idea is now set into place that we, as we create our budget, will have this money set aside.
And then, and I would like to say that has, I'm gonna hold on. And I would like to add that there has been times where we voted as a board on items that didn't go into fruition. So we have actually said, this is where this money is gonna go. But it didn't happen. And one of those items were some buildings that were supposed to be on certain campuses. So it has happened where we've set aside and we voted on things and they didn't happen. So this is, this is just a, we're putting it aside so we can have the discussion.
All I'm asking is, I, it's maybe it's a process. I'm, I'm getting stuck on process. Dr. Hildreth, how much time do you need? And it's a process. It's not a next meeting, and I think, you know, for Kirby and Gonzalez, does it have to be next meeting? I just think, what is an appropriate process given staff, like, what's appropriate process to be realistic?
So it just, it would require, um, us talking to the chief and getting information about current cost, what, what that would be. I spoke with the chief on, on Tuesday and all the things that have been shared about his willingness and, and wanting to engage in, in a reimagining process is something we both, um, think would benefit our, our schools and the community. So it really, it, it is possible. My slight hesitancy is I just do not, I want to make sure that what, whatever I ask is, is not putting the, the chief in a position that's hard to meet a deadline that's outside of what he has jurisdiction over. I don't think it's, it would be something big, but I, I can't speak for West Sac PD. But yes, can we ask for that information and say, we would like for board direction to have that ready for our next board meeting? I have no problem asking that question of the.
I, I, I mean, be honest with you, I think all we're asking for is what's the dollar amount? I mean, it doesn't get more, more simple than that. I mean, it's just a, it's a simple question. How much is the dollar amount? It looks like we have an idea of what it is by just looking at what the raises are over the last four years. We could probably get a ballpark in our heads as to what that cost will be. But, you know, you know, that's not terribly hard to figure out. And then we would ask for it to be the same MOU parameters that we have for in terms of the cost. I'm not talking about what the services.
We're not gonna have an MOU. We're just gonna set aside.
No, no, we're talking about a set aside. That's all we're saying. And that way it shows that the commitment from the district, if, if it passes, it shows commitment to, uh, from the district to the PD that we want this position back and an election won't change. And that's what his biggest concern has been.
All right. So if we can, uh, an action for next board meeting, the direction is obtain a dollar amount of what it could be for this type of position so that we could set aside for the conversation purposes.
Thank you for that. I just would like to make sure that as staff, we're clear on the direction. So, uh, what I'm hearing is, number one, work with our police department to find out the current cost of half of, um, the salary or whatever the cost would be to have this position, um, for a two-year period, similar to previous MOUs. The second ask is for us to bring that back as an action item, asking for your approval to set that aside, that amount aside
in our budget.
For this year's budget or next year's budget. I'm not clear on that.
It's a, it would be a two-year.
Could be for next year because.
This and next.
When you say this year, are you talking about adding it to the 24, 25 budget? Or for the budget that will be developed for 25, 26, 26, 27? So I'm trying to, with the two-year period.
I, I don't, I couldn't begin to tell you that. I won't be on the board. So that's more onto somebody else, but you have to set it aside at some point, otherwise it won't get done.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's gotta be the next, yeah, that's, that, we're gonna do it for 25, 26, 26, 27. Yeah, we need to.
Stop.
You're out of order.
I was like, we need to definitely just, we, it.
I'm sorry, but there was a discussion I didn't hear.
Yeah, we need to definitely take our time with this, but at least know what the dollar amount is. I don't anticipate it happening at all in this school year. And I don't even know how quickly it would be for the next one. I'm not sure. There's a lot of unknowns. I want to make that clear. A lot of unknowns. But we at least want to have it ready in case. And we'll take our time as we should. We definitely need to reach out to our community members. We cannot move, we cannot, and I repeat, we cannot move forward unless and until we talk to them and make sure we have the support. Because honestly, if we don't, this is gonna blow up and I'm not trying to have that happen.
No, I, I think absolutely not. We've made it so 100% nobody.
Yeah, so this is just to be able to have that conversation. So we're going to set that aside. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. But at least we can have that commitment to say, we are interested in having that dialogue. From what I'm understanding, they're not even interested in having that dialogue. So let's do that to at least get that piece.
Thank you.
Can I just add, can we give staff grace if they can't meet a deadline for whatever reason?
Yes.
Like, I just want to be clear because like, I, I just, so the audience doesn't think it's gonna happen if it doesn't happen, whatever. I just, that's what I'm worried about. Like, if the, if for what's, if things outside their control, they can't get it back in the next, just give our staff grace as they're kind of unpacked. That's my, that was.
Of course. I don't want you guys thinking that we're, it's not, we would like it to be, that, that's the goal, right? So that they can quickly get into that conversation piece. That's really what it's about.
We will do our best to bring it back to the September 12th board meeting. Right? Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. All right, and now we move on to our consent agenda items. First one, oh, not first one, sorry, this is consent. Are there any questions on the consent agenda eyes before, before they are adopted?
I move consent.
I second.
All right, moved by Trust, uh, Vice President Pizadi, second by, uh, Clerk Kirby Gonzalez. And as we're virtual, we have to do roll call votes. Uh, Trusty Vanegas.
Hi.
Trusty Wong.
Hi.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Hi.
Vice President Pizadi.
Hi.
And I too say aye with for the consent agenda items. Okay. Uh, action items. All right. For the first action item, approval of amendment number one of the Terracan Consulting, Inc. for soiled, soil characterization for the SR3 projects. Monique Stovall.
Okay, thank you. Um, this evening, we are asking for your approval of an amendment to an agreement that you approved on June 27th for, we call it environmental soil testing for our SR3 projects. Um, at this time, we've identified that there's more work to do, um, at the, more work than we had anticipated at these particular sites. Quick review of which sites we are requesting the amendment for, which are the eight SR, or the eight sites that are having SR projects, and that's Bridgeway, Southport, Stonegate, Riverbank, Westmore Oaks, River City High School, and Bright. Some of the projects include water bottle filling stations, parking lot improvements, ADA improvements, playgrounds, and shade. Um, the additional cost for the work is 42,900, bringing the total cost of the agreement to 162,500 paid out of the SR3 fund.
Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Are there any comments from the board?
I move. I second.
Okay, moved by Trusty Vanegas, second by, uh, Vice President Pizadi. All in favor, sorry, I, I kind of, oh, roll call, that's right, sorry. I just did that earlier and I, I spaced. Trusty Vanegas.
Hi.
Trusty Wong.
Hi.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Hi.
Vice President Pizadi.
Hi.
And I too say aye. All right, now for P2, approval to support the city of West Sacramento's development of a recreational reuse plan for portions of the Washington Unified School District's 1504 Fallbrook Street and 110. Wow. 100, 1100, sheesh, 1100 Claridin properties.
Monique, okay, thank you. Um, we are asking your approval for an updated letter of intent to partner with the city of West Sacramento. A little history, in 2017, the board at that time approved and passed and shared a letter of intent for, with the city to partner on projects at what we call now our Claridin property and Westmore Oaks School, which is the current name of these schools. Since it's been seven years, we wanted to reinforce our commitment to the partnership with the city to be able to improve the parks, um, in the area and also trails in the area, like the Sycamore Trail. All of this would be contingent on, um, an approved reuse plan or a recreation plan, stakeholder feedback, and joint funding, Alex.
All right, are there any public comments?
Yes, we do have one public comment request on this item from Pat Flint.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one. I probably have more than one problem, you know me. You're sending this letter of intent before the facilities meeting on September the 5th, September the 5th. Has the city parks department had any changes? They were not able to get grants for Westmore Oaks because they didn't own the property. Um, they haven't finished Bright Park yet. They haven't finished the Evergreen Park yet. They're having trouble with upkeep of their additional parks right now. Um, I don't understand, other than you want to update the letter of intent, the reason that this is going forward. The Sycamore Trail is not a safe route to school for children. The city is in the process of moving a couple of the motels with homeless and a halfway house down further closer to the Evergreen area. But it's crossed from Westfield on the left-hand side of West Capitol Avenue, which is very close to West Acres and the Sycamore Trail. Uh, that's not conducive to children and it's moving people that could cause problems, maybe not, to go over that trail. We've already had one skateboarder go over it without any rails on it. And so it is a safety hazard, not a safe route to school. As, I mean, y- you may have to look at boundary changes if you can't build new schools with this new development going through. And the people that are buying these new homes maybe have to be bused to Westfield. They're not gonna walk across Sycamore Trail over there. So I, I, you have, I have some real concerns. And the city, like I say, is, they're in budget crisis like you are. I don't see why this needs to go forward at this time. The skate park at the Evergreen, um, campus is not in good shape right now. And, uh, it was a joint use agreement with this, this, with the school district at the time I was on the board for like a dollar a year. I don't know what you're charging now. But basically, they're getting the land for free. And the park was built by the operating engineers local number four. So there are other ways to improve our campuses if you get out there and look for it. You don't have to depend on what the city is gonna offer you. So that's my recommendation and I expect to hear what has been done at the district offices the past year and a half to remediate the problems that were presented to you. And where have you moved these employees, uh, in the meantime? Are they still on that campus? Have they moved across the street? Where have they moved? Or are they working from home? And I expect this to be discussed again at your special meeting instead of a regular meeting that's recorded for people to watch and re-watch if they can't catch it on the night that it's planned. Thank you.
No other public comments?
All right, are in the comments from the board?
No, um, I, I just have a question on, this was discussed, just remind me, this was discussed at the two by two, right? The update?
At the what?
At the two by two? Just a reminder.
It was, and I.
Yes, it was.
Believe we reported out on it too. I had my notes and talked through each agenda item.
Al, did you have anything?
Okay.
Did you guys have any comment? What, before we move? I agree with Pat, the parks are pretty, not pretty. Our city is not picking up after the, whoever's there. Things haven't been moving the way that they should. I don't know what our agreement is, if it's a dollar or not. Um, I remember people coming up to me and said, well, it says West Sacramento's, um, city and Washington Unified School District. So who's taking care of the land? It's been asked in the past. So I don't know what our MOU is. I have asked for it. What is it that the city is supposed to do and what we as a district are held accountable for? And, um, I haven't gotten it, so I'd like to know who is responsible of what. Because if we are going to have another letter of intent or land that they're going to be utilizing for our community, there's no shade on the city, but I would like to see what it is that, like, I'd like to see these parks actually look like good parks, especially on the north side. And I say especially only because I live on the north side, so I know that we, we, community members pay for our children to be a part of youth sports. Those are city-run programs. Part of the fee that we pay goes towards the utilization of these parks. And some of us do work deposits and we go and we clean the parks before we utilize them. So what is it that our cities are doing with the money that I, as a community member, put to allow my child to play on the, on land that is owned by the school district but is maintained by the city? That is just my ask. Can I please get that? Because I would like to start harping on some people as well as what needs to be done. I'm not sure what this letter of intent is really going to do, um, in the sense of allow them more space. I, I, I just, I'm, I'm not sure how I feel about this one. But I know my partners or my fellow trustees have, they feel good about it, but I. But I know my partners or my fellow trustees have, they feel good about it, but I, I don't at this time, so that's where I'm at. But we have a motion to move.
Do you, well, before we do that, is there any pieces that you would like to add in terms of what is happening with this space and exactly what that means in terms of the space that we're, we're talking about?
Absolutely. So I'll answer some questions for the district. I can't answer-
Yeah, I know.
-how the city's using money, et cetera. But I can speak to our current joint use agreements. And with those agreements, it is the responsibility of the city to maintain that land, which parks some or fields, et cetera. What this letter of intent does is it is a commitment to having the conversations. It's, she can't hear me?
Yeah, we can all hear you.
Can you hear? Okay, sorry. It's a commitment to, to having the conversation. It is not a commitment to a particular project. It's not a commitment to a particular timeframe, but it is a commitment to certain properties, which is what's currently called the Claritin property, where we have a big field and we have the possibility to be able to create something that's great for both the community and our district. And also the backfields at Westmore Oaks, which we've been in conversations for going on three years about how to develop that backfield. The city applied for grants several years ago and was unable to secure the funding to create a park for the community. And we've been having conversations over the years to see if there's a way for us to be able to collaborate, to be able to create something that's used by our students during the school day, but yet also available to the community based upon what the city found was the community's interest. So it's looking at these two projects for the letter of intent. Again, it's not committing to a particular project, a particular timeframe, frame, there's contingencies in there where it says it's contingent, well, it doesn't say the contingent, but ending approval of these other things. And so it, we're, we're expressing our, we're expressing our interest and our intention that we will continue to have the conversation. What other questions may I ask or can I answer? So we've, we've spoke with the community in the area, and we've said, what do you want? And they said, we want a park. The city spoke with the community. Community in the area, and they said that they want a- Yes.
They, and they said specifically, thinking of that space, it is an aging community as well, and they talked about walking trail in that area, so some of the pieces came out with a walking trail. Many wanted a restroom, but they said that they didn't have the funding to do that piece of it, it's quite expensive, but, but there was a beautiful design, but because they were not able to secure that grant money, that all had to scale back. And we had approved here, we're putting in grass, getting it ready for our kids. It's long overdue at Westmore Oaks. But the city said in our meeting that they were committed to continuing to piece together funding so that they could help have a more enhanced space, more than we're able to do with just grass.
But that would all still come. Yeah, I mean, I get it, we need grass. At the same time, I'm just, there are just a lot of intent letters with the city, and I'm, I just don't, Bright Park has been sitting there for, I've been waiting 20 years for stuff, so I don't know. I'm, I just don't know how this intent letters, I mean, I'm just one, so I don't know what this intent letter's going to do, so it's cool, whatever.
I, I think that was my question, what is the hope with this intent letter? Right, like just a reminder, maybe from Vice President Pizzotti or for Kirby Gonzalez on the two-by-two, what is the hope and intent of the, of the intent letter?
Well, as I just spoke to you, they wanted to, the initial plan, you may remember, it was a beautiful plan with the walking trail. I think the first one did have a bathroom as they were going through the grant funding.
Yeah.
And so as I spoke, they were not able to secure that. We moved forward because our kids have needed a safe playfield that they haven't had. So we on our end did move forward with that, but they are still continuing to work on funding to, which would come before us what this looks like, but to have space that the community could utilize to be on just grass. And so they were looking at reimagining that plan. The other one was a safe pathway through in terms of the bike, the bike route, making sure that there was a safe path for them. And again, we would have jurisdiction over what that means and what that looks like. The initial one, you may remember, was way along the back fence of, of the old Claritin campus, which is, you know, a pretty, I personally would feel very uncomfortable riding or having my children ride that, there's not a lot of eyes way back. But we talked about, and this would come to us as well, the idea of if they could secure more funding to, to enhance those playfields, we talked about this years ago, which would be a win-win for our community because, and for us, because we're maintaining, just mowing a bunch of weeds that nobody's using. And so reimagining, using that space too and utilizing it, and it, that would be a huge win, I think, if, if they secure grant funding for that. And even spoke to if they could secure that funding, purchasing, purchasing the land as well, which is exactly, I think, what we would like to do as we think about our facility needs and what's happening. But, but that is all, that would be way further in the future. We were really just talking about a safe pathway for kids and enhancing a grass field.
And didn't they just, I, my vague recollection is that they needed an updated intent letter with an updated date on it?
Staff requested it, so trustee Wong asked, what would this do and why? A letter of intent helps staff to feel confident and be confident that the board is in agreement with the conversations that we have with the city. So when we are having conversations about potentially amending a current joint use agreement, say for the Sycamore Trail Phase III, or having our legal counsel begin looking at a potential agreement with the city for the Westmore Oaks backfield, we're confident that we are proceeding based upon the board's directions and what they, what you all would like us to do. So question, with this new intent letter, what exactly is changing? Nothing other than the date. I'd have to look at it in detail. It's, the overarching is very similar, but a big part of it is the date. The other one was seven years ago.
Right.
And we would like to ensure that our board at this time is still in agreement, still committed, that this is something that you would like us to pursue.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem with it. I was part of the original letter of intent back in 2017, so was pretty much Karen, Jackie, I think, Jackie, yeah. So, oh, I'm sorry, sorry. So, I mean, we originally signed on to this in, in the first place, so I, I don't see the, the distinction in changing the date so much would have a large, so I would move.
That moved by President, Vice President Pizzotti?
I'll second.
Second by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez. And so we're go, roll call vote, trustee Venegas?
Aye.
Trustee Wong?
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez?
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti?
Aye.
And with the trust of my trustees, my fellow trustees, I too say aye. I can be competitive, but still. All right. P3, approval of the renewal of Sammy Circuit Cater Camp Inc. for the 2024-2025 school year, Autry Streak.
Good evening again. This evening, I'm joined by Director Stephanie Groot, our Director of Compliance and Accountability. And at the August 15th board meeting, we were asked to bring the Sammy Circuit item back with more information for trustees in order to make a decision on this item. So Stephanie will lead us in a brief presentation and then request board approval on the agreement.
Thank you. Thank you, next slide. As Ms. Streak said, we are here this evening to bring additional requested item, information regarding Sammy Circuit. Just in looking at our alignment to our strategic plan, this directly supports our success in early years, as outlined in our L cap as well. And then within our four principles, looking at the safe climate and equitable access for all, as this program does support all of our sites. Next slide. The purpose is to give a description of the program as requested, as well as to talk about the new components for the 24-25 school year and as it ties to the additional funding that was requested. Previously, the board approved the L cap. This is part of one of the items in Goal One, Action 1.8, which is the district-wide motivational speaker who focuses on motivation, as motivational speakers do, and that may include fitness. It does tie to our TK VI students, and again, this is just one piece of that action. This program, Sammy Circuits, does also include family engagement, so it ties to that component of our L cap as well, as there are family nights off. Next. So what is Sammy Circuit? There were some questions last time in regard to what goes into the contract, what is provided, what services there are. This is taken directly from the contract in looking at that it's a K6 social emotional learning program that combines the best of the Castle V framework. And people may think, what is Castle V? But it truly is a way to look at our social emotional competencies. You've heard previous presentations in regard to these as we look at supporting our students and their social emotional learning. It is an interactive program that really requires no training or prep work from our staff. It is something that is brought to the staff, they are trained in how to use it and when to use it within the classroom, as well as doing, during those in-person assemblies, there is no additional staff work that goes into. It is a supplemental program. It is offered for both schools and our after-school programs. We offered some additional support and online videos through our summer program if parents would like to log on to. Next slide. As we continue to evaluate all of our programs, we really look at what is evidence-based. And that's a term that we continue to say, what is it that we're doing and how are we monitoring the success of a program? So with Sammy Circuit, there was a study that was conducted that looked at positive and reported positive changes in key SEL, social emotional learning, one of our acronyms, competencies, including self-awareness and self-management with students, social awareness, relationship, relationship skills, as well as responsible decision-making. Students in the study reported they had an increase in resilience, behavior, better understanding of others' feelings, as well as improved goal-setting and perspective-taking. Students frequently use the program slogans such as never give up to indicate a strong connection between the curriculum and what was being provided, as well as their daily behavior. Not only was there a study conducted, but we did survey our administrators last year to determine if that was something that they wanted to have back for the school year. We had 100% of our elementary site administrators reporting yes to wanting to have Sammy Circuits for this school year. Again, this is a program that we're looking at for just one school year, as we do evaluate items every single year to determine if this is something that we wanted to continue to do. Some of the quotes that we had from that survey included wanting to have Sammy come earlier in the school year to tie to those virtual lessons, those virtual weekly lessons, as well as more opportunities for him to come in campus so that the students could make that connection. And that is something that we looked at adding. Next slide. So what is Sammy Circuits and what does it look like? So for the 24-25, the contract includes the on-demand program flat fee, which is something that is offered to all teachers where they can actually log in. There is a weekly video that teachers use. They use it for a variety of things such as brain, brain breaks, also during PE time, during rain day activities, and they are interactive student stand-up. It is not, I know there was a question about seat time, but truly looking at, the students are up, they receive a quick message, and then they're standing up and doing an activity. So whether it be jumping jacks, moving around, so there is that interactive part of that video component. There are also electronic books, as well as books that we have purchased, and then there are the in-person visits. In regard to the increase, the increase in costs, the only thing that changed from last year to this year in the contract was to look at two in-person assemblies per site. That is where the cost increase comes from. So because we increased those in-person services, there is an increase to the-
Thank you, are there any public comments?
No public comment.
And we have board comments? I would think Al would have some.
Yeah, for, for me, for me, it was, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, for, for me, it was really simple. It was just community reaching out. One, I, I don't agree with more screen, pre-recorded time for our students. It does, doesn't make any sense, but I do want to continue to keep the motto of I trust staff, and if admin wants it back, then, then who am I to stand in the way of that? So I, I just disagree with pre-recorded. There's, there is no, it's not equitable at all when it's pre-recorded. It's a one-lens type of way, so like for our dual immersion, but there isn't any advancements when it comes to that piece. So again, I, I'm strongly against recorded lectures for, or activity, or, yeah, especially with young students. But again, I respect that admin is looking at this as well. I'm good.
All right. I think, yeah. Okay, good. Anybody else? Because I know I have something to say. So Sammy Circuit, much like my, my fellow trustee, don't like pre-recorded. I don't know if you know this, but you can get this stuff on YouTube at a much cheaper price, free. And the reason I say that is because I talked to a few students about Sammy Circuit, like, hey, because I am with a lot of kids from all over our district. And I asked, how is it that they see Sammy Circuits? They're like, oh, yeah, we really like it when he comes to our, to our school. That's great. Do you do anything else after Sam, after you see Sammy Circuit at your assembly? No, that's it. So we are paying $48,000 to have him come to our site twice. We're hoping that our teachers find time in their day with all these other rigorous items that we are doing to have a supplemental program in hopes to get them active and engaged when we're not really doing it. So I hear you saying that 100% of admin is saying, yes, we want this back at our school. And I'm thinking, yeah, they would love to have the kids have an assembly. I don't think that they're being pushed in the sense of, let's make sure that you do this weekly. Also, this, there was a study. Was this study done of our students? Or was this a study done outside and so we're showing it? Because this is what it can do, because I know that this is what it can do. I don't think that it's doing it because we're not using it in our classrooms the way that it should, that it should. But that's just what I feel from, based off of what I'm hearing. And, and much like Al said, like, these, these kids need, they like it when it's in the classroom. Is there an option, or not classroom, but in an assembly? Is there an option where he just comes and just, you know, does his thing, kind of like Al does? I'm just saying, like, and then that be that?
I'm sorry, an option to have him come every day to every classroom?
No, no, not every day, just like, just the two times, like, if that's, is that an option without the, like, the access?
Oh.
Or, because if we're paying for the, this curriculum or this, these supplementals that nobody's really using, or very few are using, or do a pulse check of like, who actually uses this in their classroom before we do a contract?
So-
I think Dr. H has something, too.
Yeah, I was going to say, I can, I mean, we can go back and negotiate and, and ask about that. I can say that with the new program, the videos are new. They are not something that is available on YouTube, and there are analytics that are tied where we will be able to report back to the board, to our families, on how many classrooms are actually logging in and are using the virtual- program. That is, that is also new this year.
I, I just wanted to add, I'm not sure. Um, I, I have been in classrooms and I have seen teachers using Sammy Circuit. So I'm wondering, is it mandatory that all teachers use this? Or is this an option for, this is a resource, this is a tool for those? And that may be why there's, we need, yes, we need the data, but I, I have seen it. So I'm just wondering, what is the expectation that we gave our staff for this particular program?
It is optional. Um, it, it, it is an optional supplemental program. Um, and so there is no mandated that everyone use it within their classroom. Um, but I do think having those analytics to be able to come back and then also adding the second in-person. So what happens is that when you're scheduling it, when he's there and is in person, everybody's like, yeah, yeah, let's, let's, it's, it creates that excitement. And so then we do, I believe, see an increase in that virtual use. Um, and part of the L cap, it is one of the items, we do have to report back whether or not, uh, we are utilizing it. And this is for just a one-year contract. So as we look at that, so information will come back to you in regard to the uses of any program.
I swear to God, I don't want to pile on on this topic. I, I do have a question that we didn't receive analytics or I guess a matrix, a metrics of any sort last year when we had it, because this is a renewal, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
And the, what was the cost for last?
Uh, last year it was the thirty, the thirty-two thousand.
And so we're getting one more?
It's an additional on the quote. It is, uh, two thousand dollars per in-person visit, which is an all-day visit. So when we say it's an assembly, it's not a forty-five minute assembly. It is a full day visit where students come in, they rotate through, uh, fitness circuits. I've done it, it's hard. Um, so you're doing sit-ups, you're doing wall sits, you're, um, doing bicycles, there are lights.
I mean, I'm not in a A through five or six situation right now, and I don't go to A through five PE, so I've never done that. But doesn't this sound an awful lot like a PE class? I mean, I don't know what the, you know, the difference, like I, so I don't know any. So I, help me get a picture of how is this differentiated? Yeah.
Yeah. So when we talk about the motivation piece, he comes and he talks to students about never giving up, about having resiliency. What does that look like? About overcoming obstacles and how to move through and continue to push yourself to be a better person and to have that, the good feelings of yourself, to then continue to be a better reader, to have, um, healthy habits outside of school. Thank you. Um, you can keep going. Okay. I wanted to speak to a couple of points. One, this is different than physical education, although know that there, that is the one subject area that we are mandated by minutes is physical education. And it's the one piece that we actually don't fully meet. It does fall a little bit on classroom teachers too. Um, and so having more kinesthetic is, is always valuable. Um, and I think for the piece in terms of, um, the SEL component, uh, using videos, and I don't want to speak to it because I haven't taught it, but I have been in the rooms when it's been happening, is having a video that is done and engaging with your kids. It takes actually one thing off of our teachers plates. I, I mean, they're facilitating it, they're running it, they're not, you know, sitting at their desk. Um, but having programs that kind of help, they're already doing science, math, social studies, English, and having some support where you're able to just have something ready to go. I, I find that many, um, I don't want to speak for all educators, of course, but many appreciate having that taken off their plates in terms of having a, a program ready to go. I think my questions would be, I'm supportive of, of this for this year. And then as we look at it for next year, is, is this something that we should continue to have as optional? Or is this something that we should have as mandatory in classrooms? And then working with our, uh, working with our educators and our teachers who are using it to really hear the answer to that, um, not just, of course, administrators. We really need to hear from the teachers of, is this the program that you want or do you want another? Because it is hard in this room to approve things and then hear, oh, well, we're not using it or doing it. And there is a lot of, of money that goes behind it. And I want to, uh, make sure that it's, it's maximized. So those would be the things I would think, uh, moving forward.
Yeah, to piggyback on, on that, it says a hundred percent of elementary sites responded yes to having Sammy Circuit. Have we asked the teachers? Like, I mean, are we asking, are we asking site admin that they want it back? Or do they want, have we asked our labor partners?
I would assume, and this is just my assumption, that when we're asking admin, it's based on what the feedback they have received from teachers to then say, because they too were not in the classrooms doing the program. So I would believe that our admin are asking, but this is definitely something that we would go back to make sure, like if they're doing a serve, however they want to gather that, that data that we can then.
And, and again, as we look at the development of the L cap, this was the program that was given as an example when we looked at that item. And we have all of our educational partners in providing feedback in regard to that. Um, I can also share today, I received an email from an assistant principal that said, my teachers are asking, are we having this back this year? So, uh, that's one site. That is not a comprehensive study, um, but, but that is.
Right.
Occurring.
I mean, as I was asking that question, I could see some of our labor partners shaking their head, um, saying that they were not, you know, communicated with about this. So I, I would be hesitant to approve this if, if it says one thing on our presentation, but then, you know, I'm, I'm seeing something else. I am, you know, I'm not, I didn't even have any concerns about this when I prefaced the agenda and I looked at it and I, but then I heard, you know, President Coffee Maker comments and then Trustee Vanegas about the screen time comment. Um, it, it does give me a little bit of pause, but, uh, yeah, I'm not sure where I am on this.
Given that it's an L cap, um, goal and piece with our SEL, if we, if, you know, we don't have the support, I don't know where everybody's volume is listening, um, but we have to have a piece for our SEL. We have to, we can't have our teachers asking for what program that we have and not having supports. And so I, I am supportive of, of moving forward right now with this, given that we're, um, you know, almost a month into school by the time things come out. Um, but if we're, as a board, not support, we need to understand that this is our L cap goal that has been vetted by our community ourselves when we approved it and, um, that we need to look at alternatives. Um, and I hope just on governance that we're making sure that we're, um, communicating all those concerns so that there is time to move as a staff, because, um, we want to make sure that we have time for our, um, educators and programs. You can't just turn, you know, turn it on and off real quick. So, um, that would be my plea, um, in terms of, of understanding that.
Just, just, just again, um, yeah, the, the screen time is, uh, is just an opinion, but I, but again, just to respect, um, somebody who's been in the classroom. Uh, so thank you for your perspective and also our admin saying yes. I mean, just, just staying on message, I, 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 we, this one, I'm just trusting that it's being utilized and it's valued on school campuses. Well, I'm in, I'm in, uh, that's, that's how I'm supporting that. So I'll make a motion.
He's making a motion. And so with those intent and all the comments we made for next year, as we look closely at this, I will second.
All right. So moved by Trustee Vanegas, uh, second by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez, and we are going to go ahead and do a roll call vote. Uh, Trustee Vanegas?
Aye.
Trustee Wong?
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez?
Aye.
Vice President Pizzari?
I guess it doesn't really matter at this point. So I'll say aye.
And I say no, as I have actually spoke to many students and many kids, and this is not something that is being utilized. And, um, maybe one side is doing it, but it's not at all. So that's just me though. All right, moving on. It still goes. It's okay. All right. P for approval of the memorandum of understanding MOU between Washington Unified School District and Sacramento County Office of Education, Capitol Adult Education Regional Consortium. Carrick? I don't even know if I'm saying.
You said it correctly.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, well, so it's gonna be, oh, sorry, I was gonna say Autry, but you're, oh, okay. There we go.
Hi, welcome. Good evening. Uh, this evening, we are requesting the approval of the MOU between Washington Unified School District and the Sacramento County Office of Education, which is where Carrick, our Capitol Adult Education Regional Consortium is housed. Uh, the MOU outlines the partnership between Carrick and Washington Unified School District for the next three years. We do bring this forth every year. Uh, as part of that, this is where we receive our funding for our adult education program, Washington Unified School District, specifically Washington Adult School. The total allocation for twenty-four, twenty-five is five hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, which includes the allocation, um, from their annual allocation after the one point seven percent cost of living adjustment. And, um, as a consortium, we have one-time redistribution of unspent funds within the consortium. And so we are receiving additional funding from that as well.
All right. Any public comments?
No public comments.
Any comments from the board?
I'm.
All right. Moved by Vice President Pizzari.
I wonder if you're seconding?
I'll second. Okay, yeah, I was like, Trustee Wong, second. All right, roll call vote. Trustee Vanegas?
Aye.
Trustee Wong?
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez?
Aye.
Vice President Pizzari? And I too say aye. All right. Approval of the renewal of the agreement between Washington Unified School District and Northern California Construction Training, Inc. I don't know if it just in.
NCT.
I was like, welcome back.
I like to put a lot of acronyms in my, uh, titles, but it is what we refer to them. And so, good evening. This evening, we're requesting the approval of the renewal of the agreement between Washington Unified School District and the Northern California Construction Training, which we call NCT. Uh, the renewal of the agreement, um, is for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And the MOU outlines the rules and responsibilities between NCT and our district. Under this agreement, um, we contract with NCT to deliver our construction training programs, which support both our CTE, Career Technical Education, as well as our Washington Adult School. The financial impact of this MOU with NCT is two hundred and thirty-six thousand, thirty-two dollars and ninety cents, um, to be paid from our LCFF funds, as well as through our adult education funds that you just.
Any public comments?
Yes, we do have one public comment request for this item. It is from Patrice Griffith.
All right.
Good evening. I tried. That's okay, that the timer's going. I don't have a ton to say. So as a woman in the field of facility and construction industry for over twenty-five years, and having participated in the Sacramento Region Buildings Exchanges Women in Construction Conference, also having recently completed a first-of-its-kind thirty-unit apartment building specifically for faculty and staff at a local institution of higher education, I am in full support of this renewal and agreement. It brings me so much joy to see this, so much so that I actually got a call to supervise a field trip last year for the construction, um, for the construction class that's going on. So I, I see firsthand the ramifications of not having enough people in these trades every day. It is what I do in my career. So I think that it's a great thing to, to invest in this and to continue investing in our children for the right reasons. So again, I see the importance of the construction trades and hope that exposure to programs and trades such as this are continued, um, for our students, because they are crucial to the continued growth of not only our students, but to the growth of the region as we develop, um, our region as a whole, not just our city, but we have the opportunity to do so much. And there's probably fewer places better than to do that right here in West Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
Yeah, the rock star program and award-winning, state award-winning program too, uh, to see our kids. I make a motion to approve.
All right.
I second.
Motion by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez, second by Trustee Wong. Roll call vote. Trustee Vanegas?
Aye.
I was about to say you're on mute. Trustee Wong?
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez?
Aye.
Vice President Pizzari?
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right. And now we're moving on to. Uh, the next one, board governance, um, review and establish guidelines for district office staff travel. Dr. Hildreth?
Thank you, President Coffee. Uh, we're bringing this item forward, asking the board for, um, guidelines for us moving forward for this year on district office and school staff travel. The board's decision will help us establish, uh, consistent travel policies for all staff, clarify considerations for professional development, uh, equitable access, and address any concerns about in-state versus out-of-state travel. We know that professional development is, um, a part of our strategic plan. Pillar C on our strategy map is investing in people. And that third pillar is, talks about how will we attract, develop, and retain talented teachers, leaders, and staff at all levels? And it is about results-focused, continuous professional learning. So knowing that the board, um, and the community, when we develop the strategic plan, values professional learning. So I, there's, there's no doubt about that. But we realize that because we are really looking this year and making budget decisions that we have heard some questions about travel, whether we're going to allow staff to only have, uh, professional development opportunities here in California? Or are we going to, um, allow for professional development opportunities outside of California? And with this being the beginning of the school year, as you can imagine, we have staff who are wanting to ensure that they have time to find those professional development opportunities. And if there are any guidelines or guardrails that we want to consider, we would rather know that now at the beginning of the year than later. So that's why we wanted to be sure that we could bring this in August, so that will set our, our practices moving forward.
Are there any, uh, public comments?
No public comments.
Not an emergency.
We're all checking on our.
Yeah, I was like, my kid just messaged and I was like, what is it? Um, okay, so no public comments. Are there any comments from the board? I would hope so.
Okay, I've said, said it several times. I, I just don't believe that we should be doing out-of-state travel in a year that we're going to be doing.
So you're like, saying no?
That's, that's my guardrail.
Okay.
That's just me.
All right.
I think, um, for me, when we heard the state froze out-of-state travel, it made a lot of sense to kind of think about that and follow and really kind of assess like what, how are we leading and what are we thinking about as we then talk about needing to make cuts? Um, but it was brought to us, I think, an important point, and that was, um, you know, it's less expensive for me to go to this training in Nevada than it is for us to go to this training in San Diego. And I think that, you know, that that brought up a, a good point for me. And as we know that we have all of our departments, all of our school sites, everyone combing their budgets, and I really appreciated, um, the process that we're going to be going through and how open that is going to be. Um, I think what I would say is just that, um, that you're very cognizant when making, you know, these trainings and when we really think about what is, what is really the most necessary at this time, because everybody is watching us. And as people that hear about their, um, of course, we don't want to cut any positions where.
And as people that hear about their, of course, we don't want to cut any positions where people are. But as we think about our contracts and things that have been, you know, really valuable for people, if we're looking at that, I think we want to make sure we're sending the message that we're also being very careful with our travel. What I will say, and this is probably for the board to look at, and if, in the next meeting maybe, or the one after, is we are about to have a board, a new board, thank you for your service, thank you for your service. And so, the idea of CSBA and onboarding new people, I think if we can have a discussion maybe about what is the best way to utilize those funds? Is it going to CSBA together with a new team? Is it bringing someone here and doing a workshop here together for professional development? And I think we should have that conversation ourselves too. So for me, I think right now, I'm actually a little more open than I was before about where that is in terms of travel. But just knowing that, that your staff is really fine-tuning in and going through it, just like we're gonna have that conversation, I think, about what, what is the most necessary? I don't know if that's.
I think that's extremely helpful, I think that that's true. I mean, again, raised by our, our labor partners, is that we kind of want to trust what their PD is going down to. Yeah, Vegas often is cheaper than other trainings we're bringing in, so I, I, I think there's a. And there was an attachment to this, so I, I don't know that there was actually anything proposed. It's just a direction, or kind of, is that what, is that what the request is, Dr. H?
Yes, just direction, we, we know we have a policy on travel, but the question has been from staff, is are we going to allow out-of-state travel? That's, that's the clarification we need.
Yeah. I'm gonna go back then, I'll just kind of, I'll trust staff, and I know that they know that we're also in budget constraints, and they have other, you know, there are other things that they're balancing too, as they, you know, as they're going to come into conversations with us about compensating number of things. So I, I want to say, I'm gonna trust staff and departments on deciding what some of those travel needs are.
Thank you.
And, you, you know, again, I think if you look at every year, you kind of, we, we should have an idea of how many certified, how many classified, like about how much we're spending on travel, professional development. And I can also understand how, as soon as it is cheaper outside of California. So I think just having maybe, uh, it can still be proposed, and, and again, I would trust that to know that we're all in this. But also just maybe have a, or of how much we've spent, how much more we're looking to anticipate spending in a school year with those professional development, just, just kind of have that be a part of the, maybe not the presentation or for the ask, but that we, that we keep that in mind as a, just a report that we, we probably want to have as an update as to where we are with our professional development spending.
Thank you, trustees. I also feel that, much like you guys, we, we definitely need to trust staff, because in the end, we are going to be making budget cuts. And we're gonna be pulling from certain places. And I would prefer that staff realizes that the monies that we're pulling from, it could be going towards, you know, a position, or, or we need more social workers at a certain site. Well, we, or an individual has already been to every single professional development under the sun and wants to go to this next one because it's the newest and the greatest. They also have to be mindful. And I think if we are going to be mindful, I think we should also be very transparent. So, if you've been on a professional development, I don't want to call it an excursion, but travel, and it's been for something, I'm hoping that that professional development you are sharing with your colleagues, and you are sharing that knowledge, and that we are putting it out there as somebody, oh, this was a training that I'd like to do. Has anybody taken it? Has anybody gone to it? And that is information shared with fellow, with fellow staff. Because if they've taken it, then they went and retained it, or they should have retained it, and they should be able to share it. And I think that that is key, especially when we're in this situation that we're coming up with. And, and it will also hold those who went to trainings, they will be held accountable. Because how, I mean, we don't know if they are really there, we know that we sent them, we know that they went, but we don't know if they retain the information. So, it's almost like colleagues are holding colleagues accountable for what it is that they are asking to go to. It's not, oh, it's Denver, and maybe I can get, go see a Broncos game. It's, we're going to actually go to a session, I'm gonna retain it, and I'm gonna come back, and I'm gonna be able to report out, and report out to my colleagues who want this in the future as well. So, if there could be a report, not, I don't need it, but I think our colleague, you, you know, staff need it for future train, you know, trainings that have already been taken, who's gone? And I think that that's, that would be my ask. I don't know how you guys feel, but.
I remember when we used to go to CSBA, at, at least a few years ago, when I first came on the board, we reported back some of the classes that we attended. And we brought back pamphlets or information to share with the rest of the board, because one of the things we didn't want to do is have everybody attending the same class, right? That way we could cover more ground on some of the classes that we went to. You know, so, you know, fortunately, I've had the luxury of going to that quite a few times. And I think it's a good point about, uh, you know, we'll have at least, you know, two new school board members. And the reality of onboarding them and getting them acclimated to, you know, board policies and, and, you know, what's it mean to be a school board member is necessary for them to go to CSBA. I'm not entirely sure that the rest of us would need to do that. Well, I can't, can't include myself.
You can't go.
But yeah, I don't need, I, I don't necessarily, you know, the cabinet and, and, and school board members necessarily need to go if they've already gone, right? You know, CSBA is pricey, it, it just is, and it's in San Diego, which is pricey also. So, the one thing that is good is we usually had a chance to get to know your board members. That was certainly a benefit. But just from that standpoint, you know, I don't know that that's a top priority, at least from, from my perspective.
Okay, so your direction is a little bit mixed, so you just have to know, if you bring it to us and it's out-of-state, you have some support here.
Thank you. And, and what you have asked for, that is the expectation that we will highlight with our, our school leaders, because professional development is about building capacity of the, the team, of the school, of the grade level. But I, I do know that we will have some staff who are very thankful, because the one thing that I had not even thought about is that we are so fortunate with the, the types of support we have that are very specific. And so, there's some positions that is just one person in that position, and the training that that person may need may not be offered here in California. And we still want them to get that most recent knowledge to bring back to service our kids. So, we will be scrutinizing all requests and having, and perhaps, you know, maybe adding some language in forms that are signed, so everyone knows there is a expectation that you will be bringing something back and sharing that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and now on to first read of revi, first read of revisions to Board Policy Number twenty-one, twenty-one, Superintendent's Contract.
Thank you again, wanted, this update was brought to the Policy Subcommittee. We receive updates from CSBA in different policies, and so this one is Policy Number two-one, two-one. A lot of the changes are minimal wording pieces. The main change why this is coming forward is there's an update to the ed code that states that a board shall not take action to terminate the superintendent without cause at a special or emergency meeting, so if that was an action, it would need to take place at a regular board meeting. And then additionally, the board shall not take action to terminate the superintendent without cause or within thirty days after the, the first convening of the board after an election, at which one or more board members are elected or recalled. However, the board may take action to terminate the superintendent without cause at a regular meeting during any month in which a regular meeting of the board is not scheduled. So, the bottom line, the new part, is that after an election, the board, the new board, if you have one or more new board members, cannot terminate the superintendent thirty days after an election. So that's the change.
That's the change. Are there any public comments?
No public comment.
All right, any comments from the board?
I do, was that you and I together?
Yes.
Sorry, it's getting late, I couldn't remember, and I thought it was. So, we had talked about President Coffey, and I had spoken about the idea of, while this is legal language, we can, you know, adjust as our own, and we had suggested to increase that thirty days. Again, this is without, this is without cause or within, and so we felt like it should be sixty days, I believe, or ninety. We had talked about that, we wanted to bring it to you all and see your thoughts. We had said ninety.
But yeah, I, I agree with ninety day, I mean, thirty, considering everything that was happening, I, I think that makes sense, sixty or ninety. Ninety safeguards, again, we're having a, we're going to have a whole new board. And can you imagine, like, I mean, we have all heard the stories all around the state, what's been happening, so I think that's fair.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we're all good with ninety, so within ninety days after a new board is, is, is in, okay.
So the question then would be, I think it was in the update that there, it is up to the board if it wants to come back as a second read, or the board may, after a first read, go ahead and vote. So, would you like to vote at this meeting, or would you like it to come back as a second read?
So I think from a procedural standpoint, we amended it at this board meeting, so wouldn't we take it back and then have it be put into print?
I think that's what.
Yeah, I, I was saying, you'd only amend it as a first read without action, so I'm not sure legally you could.
Yeah, so we would, so we would take this first read and the amendment, and then next.
And then we will bring it back.
And then we'll bring it back.
As with the amended language.
With the amended language, and then.
Yes.
Then we can approve it then. Okay. That's what Toby was just saying. Okay, all right. Next one. Oh yeah, first read of Board Policy Number sixty-one, twenty, Multi-Tierred Symptoms of Support.
Symptoms?
Symptoms. Systems. It's late, it's late, okay?
Yes, it is. I got you.
Thank you.
Another education acronym. Good evening, Board, good evening, Dr. Hildreth, thank you Cabinet for staying with us, shout out to the people in the back for staying, Mario and Yorgos. All right, so we're gonna talk about MTSS Board Policy. This is, yes, thank you, this is aligned with our Equity Principle of Removing the Predictability of Success, a failure that comes with a student as they enter our school system. MTSS does stand for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. There's about a dozen of us who were lucky enough to go to the MTSS California Conference that was in Anaheim this summer, which, and we pulled some of that language from different sessions that we went to into this board policy. So, previously, this was known as the Response to Intervention Policy, which is kind of what MTSS used to be called, and now it's called MTSS. So we were looking at what is the state of the current policy, and looked at new guidance from the state to see what the, like, CSBA is sample board language. And then there was an, a group of MTSS work group, which included district office staff, site staff, some of our assistant principals, principals, our SPED team was instrumental in looking at the language and really combing through it, and then brought it to the Policy Subcommittee also this summer, and so looking for board approval for this policy, so that we can really look to build the capacity of our teachers and our sites to be able to implement these systems to reach our students at all different levels.
Are there any public comments?
No public comment.
All right, comments from the board? All right. So. What do I do? We can do a motion to. I was like, oh my God, right now, I'm like, I'm serious. I have literally been.
Well, I thought our, I thought we didn't have to bring it back for a second, if we didn't amend it.
We're not amending it, right?
So we have the option of approving it.
Because there are no amendments, so.
So I make a motion, unless there's any discussion or people want to bring it back, but I think it's great to just get started and hit the ground running, this is the work we want to do for our kids. So I make a motion to approve this as a second read.
All right, so moved by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez, second by trustee Venegas, roll call vote, trustee Venegas.
Aye.
Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzari.
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right.
Thank you.
You don't have to come back.
Well, for that. Thank you.
All righty, and now we go on to our Board and Superintendent Comments, Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, President Coffey, want to just say happy second week of school, and we're thrilled to see our schools brimming with excitement and enthusiasm again, and the students and staff, and everybody is energetic, and we just are so appreciative of everyone who helped us have a great start to our twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Another highlight since our last board meeting, of course, was our Westfield ribbon-cutting ceremony on August thirteenth. It was such a great way to build momentum, launching into our first school day. We had a huge turnout of staff, students, employees, families, neighbors, community partners. What a wonderful opportunity to highlight the district and how our modernization Measure Z dollars are truly at work. So that was great. I also want to thank all of our community who are dealing with construction at our sites, and that is definitely been a challenge. We know the timing of, of the construction was not the best. And we usually aim to carry out these projects during the break, during the summer or spring break, winter. But unfortunately, our teams did not have that option. And so, we have been meeting our internal deadlines, but when there are big projects, they have to be approved at the state level from the Division of State Architect for all school-related construction projects. So unfortunately, by the time the Division of State Architect approved these projects, and then we had to put them out to bid, there wasn't enough time for us to complete the work during those summer break months. Normally, we would have said, well, let's wait till next year, next summer. However, the funding for these projects is what the board approved a couple of years ago, ways for us to use our ESAR dollars to support all of our school sites. And we know that our ESAR funds have to be spent by the end of this calendar year, really September. And so we had to complete the work as soon as possible. So I just wanted to give a little bit of the background and a little bit of the why to why we had these projects at a time that was not ideal, but there really was a reason behind it, because we didn't want to lose that funding. So thank you, community, and especially school sites where this is happening. It's already time for back-to-school night. So, Yolo High School and River City actually had their back-to-school night last night. And then all of our K eight schools are scheduled for next week. And Washington Middle College High School is set for the twenty-ninth. And these are great opportunities for our families to engage with our teachers and our staff and learn about curriculum and things like that. So, looking forward to great information being shared. We had our district kickoffs last week, Monday and Tuesday, for. for all of our certificated and classified staff. And it was a great way for our CSEA and WSTA partners to hear what the priorities are for the district. And really, it's about connections where our staff is able to see the people who may not be on their site. So that was a great journey. And then last Monday, we had our Classified PL Day. Um, and as we heard our partner say that it was, it was really well planned. So thank you again to our Ed Services team and our new uh, Director Brittany Billingsley for that. We had a turnout of two hundred and twenty-five staff out of two hundred and thirty-six that were invited. So two hundred and twenty-five came. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive. Of the fifty-six attendees who provided uh, feedback, um, ninety-eight percent stated that the content was relevant to their job duties. And uh, some of the uh, comments they left, a parent educator too shared, I really enjoyed the training. I particularly love the communication sections. They caused me to rethink perspective. Uh, one of our noon duty staff said they found it valuable. It was great, and I wouldn't change anything. So to know that what we're presenting is being valued by our staff is meaningful, and thank you for giving us that feedback. And then last but not least, very, very exciting breaking news right off the press that I just got today. I am thrilled to share that our district's attendance awareness campaign, Be Here, Don't Skip Out, on success. We are a finalist for Golden Bell Award for twenty twenty-four, first time. So this recognition is a, a testament to the incredible work and dedication of all of our teachers, our support staff, our administrators, our district staff in focusing last year, last, past years on the importance of attendance and doing something intentional to make sure our families knew about the importance of attendance and that our students are wanting to come to school. So we're gonna keep our fingers crossed. Um, the next phase is a validation process. So the uh, CSBA team will come, um, talk to the district, get some more information, and then the awardees will be announced in October. So regardless of the outcome, we're just very proud to have even gotten to this uh, level. And that helps us to keep this momentum because September is Attendance Awareness Month. So we're gonna keep that focus and um, make sure we're doing all that we can for our kids. And with that, I will turn it over to the trustee.
Thank you. All right, Trustee Vanegas.
I'm gonna keep it short, I see what time it is. Great, you know, two weeks in, let's keep it going. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Wong?
Welcome back, everybody. Um, I wanna thank um, staff. I know there's a lot of construction, especially on Southport, that can be scary for some of our parents. And I just wanna just kind of, I'm grateful for staff to actually making sure that our littles and our parents are as safe as possible. Because on that first day of school, it was a little bit treacherous, even for me, walking on that campus going, oh, my gosh. Like, this is, walking next to really fast cars. So just really grateful for that. Um, as a point of clarification, you are, we are in the validation process. So uh, if we are validated for everything that we do is correct, we are winning that Golden Bell Award. Um, and I know we just spoke about travel, but you have to go to San Diego to get that award. And there's a whole, full celebration. So just FYI. I know we were just talking about that, but hopefully that's something we have never won in Washington Unified, and something that hopefully we could support at least a couple of staff to go and celebrate and receive that honor. So with that said, I know we have two minutes before, well, we have to extend.
All right. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez?
Okay, well, I think many of us are looking forward to watching a re, uh, saved speech that will be much more articulate than mine. Um, but I want to say that um, that I appreciated all the comments that we had this evening and all the dialogue from the board as well. I think we're gonna have, you know, an even better product when that happens. Takes some time, you know, but hearing everybody working together, um, you know, is the way that, that we do the best things for our kids. Um, my only um, piece is, yes, so grateful as a mom, as a community member, everything else, thank you to everybody working so, so, so very hard across our campuses, um, and to all of our volunteers. My only piece that I wanted to bring up is um, one of, I, I noticed that a communication went out to all of our, um, I think, school site leaders. We, we sometimes end up on these emails too, about the fact that it is election time, which also means it's election within our district. And um, I think making sure that we also send some communication to our PTOs because we're gonna have fall festivals and everything else. And we so appreciate um, everyone here who serves, you know, and steps up, and everyone in our community who steps up. And we want to make sure that as you run for a seat, that the rules are very clear, that everybody knows going into it, you don't show up at a festival, you know, and somebody signs up and yours not, or something like that. So we just want to make sure that everybody's aware of the rules before they happen.
Time out. All right, it's ten o'clock.
I.
See. Okay, I motion.
You know how angry these clocks make me, that they're not all the same.
Time out. Not even different.
All right, I make a motion to approve just for like ten minutes.
Second, and then we're, okay, so.
And that's all I have to say.
I was like, roll cover. I was like, roll cover. Trustee Vanegas?
He's not voting.
He's like, I'm just, I'm staying.
He's passing, pass.
He passes, okay, Trustee Wong. I, I think, I mean, we're gonna get three anyway, so.
We'll extend for five minutes.
We'll extend for, we'll be quick, we're gonna be quick, okay.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, we're good. All right, sorry.
No, I'm done, I have three.
Okay, 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 all right. Vice President Pizzari?
Yeah, I just uh, quickly wanted to say, welcome back, everybody. Uh, it was interesting walking on campus and seeing big construction sites fenced off, you know, especially for the ADA. We're, we're, we're actually creating ADA safe spaces, and yet we're creating ADA unsafe spaces by, by having those there. So it, it was definitely like eye-opening to see that happening. And it was not something that I registered, even though I knew the construction was going on. I, it wasn't what I registered and what the vision of that looked like until I got on campus and saw it, and I was like, ooh. So totally understand, and I get it. Um, I do want to say um, thank you to all involved in um, uh, getting uh, a, a wrestling program uh, going for middle school grades. Um, that's something that is, or at least a wrestling club program, is something that's very important to me as well as um, uh, a lot of our kids in the school district. This is not something that is, you know, um, based in just one portion of the district. It is in both portions of the district. And I think it's gonna be very helpful as a feeder program to the high school, um, and their club, or their program. So uh, with that, I don't want to take up too much of the time. I appreciated the discussion today, it was very spirited, and that's what we should have, is a spirited, lively conversation. Um, I, I'm counting down the board meetings that I have left, and it breaks my heart a little bit, but at the same time, I've known that I've been here for nine years and uh, and uh, I, I, I do appreciate just about everything that I've had the opportunity to support, pose. But it is making me nostalgic as I get to see these last couple items that. Um, thank you, that's all I got.
All right. I'll make it quick, I had a lot of stuff, but y'all covered most of it. Um, so uh, as uh, as it was said earlier by our labor partners, you know, the, the trainings, let's make sure that if we're gonna be doing something for one, that we do it for the other to ensure that we are being um, equal across the board. Um, also, I wanted to make it, uh, make it a point that uh, I know that I speak about Yolo a lot. I'm not gonna talk about the ball wall, but I am gonna talk about the handball wall, sorry. Oh, yeah, see, told you, I'm all over today. But I do want to talk about the need for some emotional support at the, at the campus and how it really is um, important that we have somebody who is there full-time for our students, not necessarily part-time or occasionally um, when they're not at another site. So um, I do agree that we do need to look at the um, aspiring leaders and which one of our aspiring, like, who's taking those, those courses? Um, and where are they going? Um, and how is it that uh, we have some aspiring leaders that are trying to move up um, with the training that is being provided, and yet they're unable to do that? So it's kind of, um, I would hate for them to leave because we're not giving them the opportunity to grow here. And um, and with that being said, I do believe that a social worker is needed at Yolo full-time. Um, half of one is not, is not sufficient, especially with, as we know, most of the, most of the students there are um, have EIPs. I was gonna say four oh fives, but I have five oh fours, um, but you know what I mean? So um, definitely, we need to, we need to look at, at what's really happening there. We have a lot of programs, and from what I'm hearing, some of those programs are not really um, doing what they were intended to do. Um, and so I think there needs to be a little bit more focus there. Um, so with that, that's all I have. Uh, going on to future board agenda items. I have, that we have, uh, next regular board of education meeting is on September twelfth. Uh, summer programs update will also happen in September. We're only in August? My brain. And then special board meeting on district office facilities will be September twenty-first. Are there any other ones?
May I just um, remind the public that the September twelfth regular board meeting will be hosted at the Washington College Middle High School. The chambers are not available on that day. And so I was going to put it on the agenda as well, but it oversight, but the September twelfth meeting is not gonna be here.
Okay, so it's gonna be like that Bright Cafe?
That Bright Cafe.
Okay, Washington Middle College. All right, and then there was an.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, yes.
Um, so I, Nikiba Gregory, um, one of our educators, says to um, trainings of others on land acknowledgements. And I thought this would be a good time to ask for our staff, maybe to work with her and Annette Ocha, who have taught our uh, Native American Studies uh, courses, to have a um, discussion item about our land acknowledgement, or maybe an action item, bring it for us. But if, if we could engage with them on what that could look like, because our um, land acknowledgement um, was done in consultation with other local um, education institutions. But I think having our um, our, our staff who are Native American um, help with us would be um, welcome. So I asked for that. I also asked that we put on a future board agenda under board governance that question about um, in terms of the board education, so we can kind of hit the ground running um, in December, whether that is going to CSBA, if we have a Golden Bell, I don't know. But um, but in terms of, does it make the most sense to bring in someone from CSBA to work with us here in Yow at the same time? Um, any new trustees doing their Board of Governance classes? Because I think those Board of Governance are really nice and targeted, but I think we should just have a discussion as a board. Um, so I asked for that. And then um, lastly, this is not putting anything on there, but as soon as we know that we think we'll have a, that we're having a special board meeting, it takes some time to figure out all of our dates. But I just think on practice, it's great when we always have it down here, um, when we can. It, it is tricky with our schedule.
I was gonna say, yeah, I know it's tricky with our schedules. But you know what was amazing? I saw a Facebook post that said there was a meeting coming up, and if we know as soon as, we can blast that on social media for sure. And I know people will take a screenshot and share it via text if they need to. So, and then they can all be here if they'd like. And there was something else that I missed. And then the action item for uh, for, for the SRO monies. Um, okay, well, other than that, we, we'll aim for the twelfth. Anything else? Good? All right, on that note, this meeting is adjourned. Nine minutes over, not even ten.
Well, it was supposed to be a long.
You're like, it was only.